Can you hear us now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, we're gonna hold off opening the meeting for a few minutes, it's not six o'clock yet anyway. We're gonna set up room twenty-four for overflow, just in case we, so that everyone wants to be here has a seat. So Josh is gonna run over and set up room twenty-four.
It's already.
Yeah.
Hi Jane.
Hi Jane.
Hello.
You still on the west coast making your way back?
Oh boy, yeah, we're still here, we're still in Washington.
Geez, sorry.
Yeah, everything's just been one delay after another. Here we are. How's the weather there?
Beautiful.
Lovely. Raining where you are?
No, it's actually gorgeous today.
Good. That's something.
Everybody's been commenting on how we brought them nice weather.
She is, is me.
There he is.
Open in there?
Not yet, that laptop is firing up.
Just asking everyone to give us a moment to get configured as we're in a new room for the evening. Did it call in here?
It's no AC, right?
Something's going on.
Yeah, right.
This room has air.
Any extra agendas?
This agenda is right there, yeah.
Anybody need an agenda? We got a couple. Okay, good.
Sarah, do one.
Not on the TV yet.
Thank you.
Hey Phil.
He's new.
Hi Phil.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Phil, let's come over here.
Up here?
More comfortable.
Yeah. We need the seats back there too.
Where is? Is this Josh or?
That's Josh, that corner is Josh.
We're just doing some updating on the laptop in there.
Great.
Josh, we on TV yet?
What?
We on TV?
Yeah.
You're not gonna be on TV.
Okay.
You're gonna be Zoom recorded and then we'll post the video tomorrow or today.
I just had a question from Sarah.
Okay, yeah, the meeting is being recorded, we'll probably cut out the beginning stuff until you guys actually open the meeting, but yeah, it shouldn't take too long, and I've gone through like two or fifty.
I hate that about Windows now, you can't tell it, I need to use the computer now, please do not do this.
Oh, the update?
Yeah.
Like you can do it now or tonight? Typical.
People are out there, I can't.
It's Dana and Josh right now, assuming that participants is real.
Hoping that participants can hear me. Yes, please be patient, we're getting organized and getting all the media connections set up. Jane, are all the boats put together?
The boat that we're putting together is pretty much together, although there were some, some issues that we're dealing with Vietnam about. And now we're waiting for the boat to arrive on a barge from Kodiak into the port of Seattle to bring home.
Okay. Where is she? She's in Washington State. Assembling boats.
Assembling boats.
Lots of driving.
Yeah.
I know.
Lots and lots of driving, yeah. Yesterday, we were in a hotel outside of the Boeing headquarters with a view of their landing strip with Mount Rainier in the background, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah. I was waving to you when I was there last week.
Can you go ahead and speak?
Yeah, can you hear me?
That's better, right?
She was, she was well, well projecting.
Can people watch on Zoom tonight?
Everyone can watch on Zoom, yes.
Okay, we need to make that announcement, because Sarah couldn't find us anywhere.
Well, if you're not already on Zoom, you won't hear the announcement.
You don't.
Oh.
Well, we haven't started the meeting yet, so. Are we ready?
Recording, I am the host on this side, that is good, yeah, I think we're ready.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for your patience. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, October sixth. We're being held in room twenty-seven at Town Hall, we also have overflow seating in room twenty-four of Town Hall. This is being broadcast via Zoom and is available to anyone via the Zoom link. It is not being broadcast on the WCTV channel, the video will be available tomorrow. So it is six oh eight, and I'm gonna have a roll call and call the order, starting with Ms. Gleason.
Jane Gleason here.
Julie Moran here.
Sam Corbett here.
And Carl Schultz is here, and because Ms. Gleason is remote, I will be acting as chair this evening. We have a quorum, and I'm calling the meeting to order at six oh eight. The first order of business is we have minutes from two meetings outstanding, I guess we don't have the twenty-second yet, so.
Do not.
We have minutes from August twenty-fifth and minutes from September eighth, has everyone had a chance to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion? Okay, so let's do one motion for each, can I have a motion for each, please, one at a time?
The move?
A motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Minutes of August twenty-fifth as submitted.
Second.
As submitted.
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor, and this has to be roll call because we have Zoom.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Jeff East, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the chair, acting chair votes aye.
And I am signing the minutes.
Okay, thank you, all right, we have the minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted? And a second, a motion by Sam Corbett.
Second.
Second by Julie Moran, again, a roll call vote, all in favor, starting with Ms.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Jeff East, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And the acting chair votes aye.
And I am signing the minutes.
Okay, so the minutes are signed and they're gonna go in the box, I guess.
Correct.
All right, so that just leaves us with the minutes of the twenty-second. All right, the first order of business is the continued public hearing for three twenty-five, Rick Valenti, definitive residential subdivision plan for Pierceville Road, is the applicant here?
He is on Zoom, I'm gonna allow him in.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Good evening.
Yes.
Good evening.
Right, and I think what we'll do, this has been quite some time since we've heard an update on this application, so I think perhaps we'll hear from the applicant with a status update and then from Mr. Cordero, because we got your, your peer review and there's some issues on there. So the applicant, Mr. Morris, could you state your name, spell your name for the record, and as you're giving official testimony, can, we'll swear you in, once you've stated your name and spelled it, please.
Sure, yeah, my name is Tom Morris, T O M M O R R I S, from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Great, so if you could raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth and the whole truth.
Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
And the whole truth.
And the whole truth.
They can't leave anything out. So, thank you, it's been quite some time since we've had you before us, so perhaps you could give us an update on where the project is.
Sure, so I haven't been the one to represent the project at the previous meeting, so I don't know what's been discussed, but from what I understand.
Three, four, or five months since anybody's been here.
Yep. From what I understand, we have gotten the second review letter from Allen Major, and there's several open items left on it, I was actually working on it today, and I don't think there's anything that's a major hangup, and we should be able to have all the revisions in this week. So hopefully, getting it to you guys this week, you can go back to Allen Major, and hopefully everything is cleared up with this revision.
You don't see any issues, okay.
There's quite a few things.
So you have no comment on any specific item?
Nothing that we have a problem with, we're making all the changes as recommended, essentially.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
You can, or do you want to let Phil go first and then ask your question?
Yes, sure.
So you have nothing else to add at this point?
No, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
We'll get the questions in a bit, so Mr. Cordero, if you'd like to just present your perspective.
Sure, sure, so not, not, for the record, Phil Cordero from Allen and Major Associates, not terribly dissimilar from Mr. Morris's position, obviously, we have received revised information. Under the initial application, we had some noted concerns with some of the lots that were created onsite relative to overlap with maintenance and drainage easements, we had some technical matters related to the underground drainage, and then we also had a few matters of strict zoning compliance. During their first response to us, they did address a number of those, but it's not one hundred percent complete at this point. They did have some technical issues relative to the drainage that they still needed to solve, they needed to revise some calculations. One of the elements that we'll ultimately note for the planning board for their consideration when it comes time to act on this application is they don't have the sufficient number of onsite test pits to support the drainage that they're proposing, which is not terribly uncommon, the soils here in Wareham are fairly consistent, but the Massachusetts Stormwater Regulations require a particular number, and we assess that on these applications. So we would recommend the board ultimately think about a condition when the time comes that a soil test pit be, be conducted. They also have several areas of overlap where the maintenance obligations under the Homeowners Association should be, should be clarified for this board before you ultimately act on it, so we've made note of that. And then they've also, excuse me, lastly, they just have some, some plan notes that just need to be cleaned up and coordinated simply to make sure the application is complete, and there's no subsequent changes that would require a modification to the subdivision later on. I did speak to Niles Zager via, Zager via email earlier today. We are in general concurrence with their intent on how to address the comments, they simply need to go through and address the comments as, as Tom pointed out. So I think if they can commit to having plans back into the planning department within a few days, we could absolutely review them in advance of the next meeting, but our ability to review it, obviously, I would recommend to the applicant to get those plans in as quickly as possible, especially I know the board has a really full agenda coming up, you know, that if we don't need to take up a placeholder to not make progress, we should look toward the next meeting.
Okay. Questions from the board, I know Ms. Moran, so we'll let you go first.
Sure. Question about, and it's, it's always a concern of mine, scenario of Conservation Commission occurring after you've gone through the process with, with us. It's like the fire department, and there are issues, and there has been a decision, pro or con, whatever it might be. And you go through Conservation Commission and you find that there are changes that have to be made, which is very challenging for us. Query on where you are with, there's several issues, no, the fifty-foot, no activity zone, and I know you, you felt you got some assurance, but obviously you don't have the documentation in hand, so are you anywhere at this point with Conservation Commission, have you filed anything?
I don't believe it's been filed yet, typically, we like to get through the major revisions with planning board, because in our experience, there's more changes that happen with planning board. And it gets kind of to be a difficult balance if you're doing them concurrently, than making a revision for one, then another, and then they overlap and we have to, it, it gets a little confusing. So generally, we do planning board first.
But you're aware that you'd have to, it would be for naught if in fact the Conservation Commission makes some changes.
Right, yeah, we're, we're, we'd have to come back.
Which is.
No, no, you can't get our approval without their order of conditions.
Right.
In that order.
Okay, so.
So you need to be moving.
Yes, you cannot, you cannot get an approval from this body until you have the order of conditions, or a notice of, what, what's it called, Josh, when they don't have to do anything, the notice of.
So if they don't need to do anything, they get a determination of applicability.
Non-applicability.
Right, so we need that.
We have just had too many situations where, in your, like your case, decision made and conservation comes back and makes changes, so.
Yeah.
Then you're, our best interest, your best interest, to do that.
Yep.
Just for the record, this would not be a determination of applicability, this would be an order of condition, notice of intent, so they would have more work.
Yes, agreed.
To do with conservation.
Yeah, agreed.
Yep.
More questions?
No, but I want to thank Phil for pointing out and really focusing on the easements, the easements and the various drainage easements, the HOA, there's a lot going on in this property, so we would be really be looking for the documentation for the HOA and what the HOA covers, because there's a lot of the trees, there's the stormwater management, there are the driveway lanterns, small, smaller and larger things. So that is of a concern to me as a member of the planning board, that we be, be aware, you be aware of the HOA and provide documentation about what that might look like.
Absolutely.
And then we know easement, storm, drainage easement, Phil, you had, I know in your, so, we'd like to see drafts of those rather than waiting until the end, that's my feeling, so, okay, that's.
Sam.
Open items.
Comment, questions?
Where are we on the lighting?
The lighting, so I know we just had on the plan, the driveway lanterns was, I'm not aware of anything that needed to go beyond that.
Intersection of Pierceville?
That was originally discussed.
Yeah.
At that intersection.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, like I said, I, I haven't represented this project before, the guy who, Will, from our office, who's been here before, has been out, so I had to cover the meeting, I'm not aware of the lighting issue.
Okay, so you can carry that back, there was
Yeah.
a request requirement for lighting at that intersection.
Okay.
Anything else, Sam?
Where are the sidewalks, I think, I live in an area like this, one sidewalk, in my opinion, is not good. You can see the little kids going down the driveway into the road, as opposed to having a sidewalk there.
Well, the requirement is for sidewalks on both sides.
Right. And you know, they, they proposed none, originally.
Right.
And they proposed one.
On the preliminary.
And they wanted a waiver on it, I don't think we should waive that.
I don't believe we can grant a waiver. Good, they have to get a variance. Okay, right, we can't grant a waiver, right, Phil?
I, I, Ms. Chair, I believe you can, you, you, you are the, the regulatory agency on the subdivision rules and regulations.
That's right, yes.
You grant the waiver.
I'm sorry, there was, there were requests here for waivers.
Yes, the very end of it, yeah.
Right, so ju- just for the clarity on the sidewalk, I wasn't here when they presented the preliminary plan, but they had presented that they were doing one sidewalk, and this board had approved the preliminary plan contingent upon the one. When the initial application came in, they had no sidewalks and a request for zero, we flagged that because it was inconsistent with the original preliminary decision, and they have now added the singular sidewalk back, so they're at least consistent with what this board had recommended they do on the application. Whether or not you want the additional second one, I'll defer to the board.
Okay, thank you for the history, good, so just bringing you up to speed, Mr. Morris, I, this is, really, it's really, I'm gonna give feedback from the board, this application is very problematic, and the fact that you're just covering puts us at further disadvantage, the applicant has missed multiple meetings.
Without notice.
Without notice. We're, this is not a good process from your side of the house, and you need to carry that back.
Absolutely, I apologize for that.
I'd also say that having, and I'm relatively new on the board, but having seen Ellen Major reports, the second, this is the second round now, and the first round, to me, was problematic, how much was missing?
Right.
And how many errors. Yeah, it just, there was many places where there was no information provided. It wastes our time, it wastes your time, so it's frustrating when folks do not look at, I think our list of what we need is very comprehensive, could be better, we're working on that, but it would be very helpful to look at the application materials, the list of what we're looking for, and provide it.
And just so you know, many.
Get the zoning bylaws, sorry.
Many neighbors have showed up many times, and it had been turned away because there's nobody from your firm here.
Well, from the applicant, whether it's his firm.
Yeah, the applicant.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Carl, do you want to have any neighbors up, up, speak?
We didn't get that part yet, Phil, questions from the board, Mike?
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions, and I apologize, I didn't breathe myself. Josh, did we hear back from any of the departments with comments, although that was months ago now, that this application, no comments?
You put in the fire department.
Well, okay, have we heard from the fire department?
Yeah, sorry.
No.
Okay, we cannot proceed if we don't have the fire department letter. The same, other departments, we take, we don't hear, they have no concerns, but Conservation Commission and the fire department, we absolutely need positive acknowledgement, have you pursued the fire department?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, I'll have to relay that, and we'll get on that.
Very difficult for us to process this application. It's very frustrating.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not gonna be a great help on that. I understand, I understand.
Did you take it back?
Yeah.
Okay, Josh, other than fire department, Concom, we generally, you know, border health.
Border health.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they've all been given the chance to respond.
But we don't, if we don't hear, we just assume they don't have a concern.
Yeah, you generally just move forward.
Right, okay. All right, so as this is a public hearing, are there any citizens who would like to speak? I see one, please come forward so you can be seen, state and spell your name, and then ask away.
I'm Robert Kristofalski, I'm spelling for Robert Kristofalski, K R Y S T O F O L S K I.
And your address?
Forty-nine Pierceville Road, I'm near Butter on the left side of the proposed road.
Okay, great, so please, you can sit, and, and please, we'll hear from you. Direct, if you have questions, direct them through the, through the board.
Okay, my questions is just general, like we're talking about the water, mitigation of the water, the drainage. Being near Butter, just looking at the proposed plans, the only ones we had from the first meeting, have had nothing since then. The grade of the proposed road finished is seventy to seventy-one for height, and they have shot lines apparently, and they indicate sixty-nine and seventy on my property. The proposed road at that point had the berms on, a Cape Cod berm for a twelve-inch rise, with a two or a four percent grade, at least three feet to either side. So just in looking at it generally, it looks like it's gonna create a dam along the side of my property line, and my, being my land being lower, the grade, the road's higher already to start with, plus the berm, plus this three-foot grade that they allow two or four percent on top of it to be finished. So it seems like when they're pounding all down the side of my property, which has no drainage problems right now. And talking to the engineer that night, that Will, just briefly, and stuff, we're looking, it was only three feet off the property line. So it brings up a lot of problems with snow removal and everything else, you got a six-hundred-foot road, where's the snow gonna go, up against my fence that's near the property line, in between this three-foot, I plow, we've all seen, you can't stick snow in a three-foot area on a five, six-hundred-foot road. That's one of my big concerns. The other thing is, far as, it creates a huge wind tunnel, removing the trees, looking at the proposed plan as they drive on the road, to the left of the boundary that they use for my property line, I have a copse of trees, probably twelve, fifteen trees there. Soon as they put the road in for about a hundred and sixty feet back, it looks like, and then veers off to the right, it's gonna be stripped of trees, probably for a distance of eighty to a hundred feet, and it's gonna open up a quarter of a mile wind tunnel from five, six-hundred feet down to the cul-de-sac, straight across up Pigmal Road. So those trees are gonna come down in no time, we're in sugar sand up there, as they know when they perk. It's all sand, there's nothing holding it, the eighty, hundred-foot pines, some oaks mixed in that have been there forever. Further down beyond that, they seem to want to leave a little copse of trees to the back of my fence and property line, again, it's triangular piece. Further down beyond that, they seem to want to leave a little copse of trees to the back of my fence and property line. Again, it's triangular piece. And stuff, and those are all eighty, hundred-foot trees. As soon as they take that out, there's no structure supporting it, the wind's gonna whip right through there. I'm gonna have all the trees coming down to my property most likely, because that's the path of resist, least resistance, coming down that way. So I'm concerned about trees coming down that they don't remove adjacent to the property line. Not being far enough off my property line to dispose of the snow properly when it does snow, because there's nowhere else to push it. And then, not that it's directly, but I have a copse of trees in front of my house about twenty feet deep, a hundred feet across, that I've had for thirty-five years, that is still standing. But soon as you wipe out the rest of the trees, I know those trees are coming down too, and I just, you know, I don't know what we can do to mitigate that. I know it's further off the property line, but it's gonna create a huge issue with opening that all up. And I just don't want drainage problems, you know, and I don't want tree problems that are gonna be because of this, if it can be prevented ahead of time. It's a mitigation, I know this, they're working on the drainage. And just walking the land, you can see it's already higher than my land, so they've really gotta do something with the road, drop it down, do something, if they move forward with it, you get the pitch the other way. And like I said, the retention pond that they had down the end, I don't know, like you said, they haven't tested it yet to see if it's gonna drain properly or just become a mosquito pond, like a lot of them do, because they're not maintained, and I don't know if that's part of the HOA as well. If they're gonna maintain the roads, any sidewalks, anything else they put in there, if that's part of it, because when those things get overgrown, nobody maintains them, they turn into a mosquito pond. And of course, being next to the cranberry bogs, we already have, you know, Plymouth County mosquito control out there doing the best they can, but I don't want them adding to any problems that already exist. And that's basically my big concerns right now, because nothing's been addressed, so we don't know traffic study, the lighting study. Because the road there is, living in the, in the area all my life, and driving that way for forty years, people come around the island the wrong way, the way the road is, the way the road is proposed to come out on the, um, traffic side. People come around the island the wrong way all the time, people are gonna shoot straight out. There's accidents that happen, there's a lot of unreported, you see skid marks into the woods that are there now, that always is, pieces of cars over the year there, so it's unlit. I think it's on the opposite side of the road in the island where it should be, because naturally, if anybody approaches it, the road's probably about a hundred and twenty feet wide at the mouth of it, traffic island in the middle. The road proposes to the left lane, people shoot straight across now, take left, don't go on the proper side of the island. So I know they're talking traffic studies, but I don't know if anything's been done, because nobody showed up to let us know anything, and so, traffic study, the lighting, because it's not in that neck of the woods, and I don't know if a few lights on post up in front of driveways can help anything. And then just a lot of mitigation and the trees are my big concerns, and I just, okay, wanna make sure it doesn't get, uh, be a problem for me.
Thank you. Um, so you've heard the concerns from the citizen, so just carry the fact. Uh, Phil, as, as we go through the, um, the review process, keep it advised on any thoughts you have on the neighbor concerns.
Sure, so, uh, maybe I can just jump in on, on a couple of them, uh, you know, to the board's discretion, if you don't mind. You know, in terms of a traffic, uh, and a lighting study, um, you're certainly welcome to ask for that information. In our experience, looking at this subdivision, it is not, they're technically not jet, traffic generators, and the study maybe isn't warranted on a subdivision of this scale. Um, we do require, and it was a component during the initial review, that adequate safety and site distances be provided at the intersection, because that's the critical juncture, uh, you know, with Pierceville Road, and they did do that, and it does meet those standards, and it does meet the standards that the town has set forth. Uh, relative to drainage, um, we did review, and as part of their revised application, they did make changes to the, to the shoulder drainage. So it is not running onto this gentleman's property directly. They will have a swale that redirects it to a collection area on their property to recharge that water into the underlying sand, which is, is, is well permeable and can take the water away. So this gentleman should see improvements over maybe what you're seeing out there today as a result of this project does, does ultimately get built. Um, the snow removal, uh, that's sort of a different issue, because we, we know the snow plowing operations will fall into the HOA agreement, and you can obviously provide, uh, opinions to that as you see fit. Um, ultimately, they, they will likely create windrows on either side of the street. Um, so you probably would get some snow melt, um, on there. But I think a standard condition, again, for your consideration, is that you, the, the applicant or under the HOA, or whomever is, uh, um, au- authorized to perform maintenance, is that they're not snow plowing snow directly adjacent to this gentleman's property, simply because of how close the shoulder of that road is relative to where he, he lives. Um, so I think that's something that could be handled. Um, and then lastly, he did speak about the trees. We did go out there and look at it, uh, you know, we're aware of the trees that he's, he's mentioning. Um, I will say the hard truth, unfortunately, if the subdivision were to get approved, the trees would get removed, and the wind corridor, those directional winds may change, and that's just an effect to development, unfortunately. And I don't know that there's much we could do in terms of an engineering solution to solve that.
There's no mitigant, like putting tree barrier on the side of the road, or? I, I'm gonna say arbiviti, even though that may not be the right.
Uh, it's prob- probably not. I mean, again, those are things you can consider, usually arbiviti.
I, I just, I picked.
No, no, that's, arbiviti or other, uh, is really more for screening purposes, more so than, than wind. It will have an effect, because as soon as you put wind through the leaf and the leaf bloom from a tree, it does knock it down a little bit. Uh, but you're probably not going to get the impact that it sounds like this gentleman would look for from the old growth trees that were there, unfortunately.
Okay, that's my issue, more of the trees that are standing coming down, not so much a screening without providing or anything else put back there, it's just a matter.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for screening, I was looking for some kind of wind.
Wind barrier.
Nothing's gonna stop that. Once they take that down, the corridor's open and, yeah.
Um, one, one thing that I would suggest, though, since the gentleman did bring up trees, and for the board to consider later on during deliberations, is it may be helpful if this does go to construction, that you request the applicant to mark out the limit of work so that we can visibly see where the trees are going to be coming down before they come down. Because there are certain circumstances, and this may sound counterintuitive, that when you see the trees that are going to come out, that's fine, but when you see the trees that are going to remain, you may make a hard decision that it might actually be better to take the tree down rather than let the tree fall down if you decide to thread the needle to a limit of work. Um, and that's sort of a, a go between, between the subdivision and maybe the trees that the gentleman is referring to.
Okay, thank you. Great, thank you. Are there any other, uh, citizens who would like to speak?
Seeing none online, let me just step out in the hall and.
Oh, and I forgot to ask Jane if you had any questions. So while Josh is out, Jane, I, I forgot you were out there. Do you have any questions?
Um, I think that you, uh, from my list, I think you guys have pretty well covered what I was concerned about.
Wave, wave frantically if I.
Yeah, I will.
Oh, I, I did have one question, Phil. Um, at one point, there was a concern about the road width, uh, twenty-two feet versus twenty-one, has that been resolved?
Uh, it, it, it has, they're, they're in keeping with the subdivision standards, so they're, it is approval.
Okay, great. And then we're gonna talk about the road condition and the whole, all the standard, all the, all those standard subdivision conditions that we've been trying to develop.
Should apply.
Should apply.
I didn't see anyone out in the hall. I did receive a phone call asking if this was being heard tonight. Uh, that's why at the beginning of the meeting, I ran over to room five-twenty. It's very clear that that is a FinCom meeting and not to be confused with planning, so I, I don't believe there's anyone here to speak on the matter.
So we will need to continue this hearing, um, I think, right now, the twentieth, Jane, is pretty busy, right?
I think so, yeah, we've got all of the, or we've got, we'll probably have some of the zoning, um, meeting, um, articles to cover. We've got, uh, Two East Boulevard, which is gonna be loaded.
Is he, yep.
Onset Avenue for the.
Yeah, that's.
Stone, that, that, Two East, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And were there two new projects, Josh, that had come in that we would need to hear on the twentieth?
Um, that's correct. Um, you have a site plan review for, uh, Water Whiz, thirty-three-one Cranberry Highway. And, um, I think it was actually just a couple of planning board articles.
Okay, that sounds pretty busy, um, so I'm recommending, uh, November tenth, Jane, but is that okay?
Yeah.
You need it November tenth. Is that okay with the applicant?
Um. Um, yeah, I mean, we'd like to go with what you guys prefer. If it's, if it's too busy on that next meeting, I understand.
Yeah, okay, great. So, uh, I'm looking for a motion to continue. And then, three-twenty-five, Rick Valeni, definitive residential subdivision plan, Pierceville Road, called the regularly scheduled, uh, planning board meeting of November tenth, twenty-twenty-five. A motion from Sam Corbett?
Second.
Second.
A second from, uh, Jane Gleason. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Hey, fifty, aye.
Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye, and Carl Schulte, aye. Uh, Mr. Morris, you need to send a letter to the planning office requesting that continuance. Uh, but we're all good. That's just formality to close the loop.
Sure.
Okay. All right, that's it on this. The next item on the agenda. We ready for next item, Josh?
Yep.
Four-twenty-five, Plan twenty-five dash five, Kevin Welch, Site Plan Review, twenty-three thirty-one Cranberry Highway. Anyone from the applicant?
Yep, they're just sitting in the other room.
Down the other way.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Hi there, we can see here. So.
Hang on just a sec, let's get organized.
Hey.
So if you could introduce yourself, state your name, spell your name, and if either of you are professional engineers, we're gonna swear you in.
Okay, great. So my name is Attorney Jeff Delisi. That's J, uh, Jeff with a J, and, uh, Delisi, D as in David, E L, I S as in Sam, I. I'm with Orenberger, Delisi and Harris in Situate. This here is Darren Grady, I'll let Darren, it's D A R R E N G R A D Y, and I M P E.
So if you would raise your right hand, swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth. I think that's it. I think I got it.
I do.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, great. So we were here last, I believe it was two weeks ago. Um, the kind of summary is that we pretty much were down to just a fire department comment, which, uh, prior to the last meeting on the sixteenth of September, was issued by the fire department. Uh, Grady Consulting then met with the fire chief, they agreed on how, uh, how to, what information was required, that information was presented and, uh, received by the fire chief on the twenty-second. Um, unfortunately, we, after a few nudging, a few attempts to reach out to him and, uh, kind of close the loop, um, we, uh, have not yet received kind of the green light, go ahead. Um, it's a little frustrating as I'm, uh, driving from Situate, Darren here is driving from Kingston. Um, and so I just did want to remind the board that if you look at the fire department letter and the response, um, it's certainly within the discretion of this board to close and vote to approve this site plan. Um, if you see that really, uh, his, uh, concerns were answered, uh, so, oh, Darren reminds me that the hearing's closed, and that's escaped me.
Because that was a concern that I had about the process, and, um, so Jane, did you want to speak to that? Because they need, they need, uh, revised letter. So you, you were suggesting that, um, we could accept that, or can, you wanted to vote for conditioning it?
Well, I think that.
Did we actually close this hearing? I don't remember.
No, I don't believe we did close this one.
My, my recollection is that we talked about closing it.
You don't think we.
We talked about it, and we, we.
You sure you want to do that?
That was what we decided at the last time when you were here. I do not, this one we did not close, another one we did.
There was some confusion, and it was this, this one we did not close, there's another one that we did close, and I know that I've, I've conflated the two, but yeah, this one we did not close.
So, um, so the meeting, the hearing is still open, so we can, depending on what we decide to do, we can still take the letter from the fire department. Your, your preference is to move more.
Yeah, um.
I'm gonna let the board deliberate, and unless you have more input.
Sure, I just would like Darren to explain, uh, what the fire chief, uh, what the fire chief's letter was and how it was responded to, and that way the public has an understanding that the loops have been closed.
I think this might have been explained at the last meeting, but I'll make it brief. Uh, the curb radius on the driveway entrance has been changed to twenty-five feet. Uh, the swept path analysis has been updated to show that the truck on the incoming lane and the outgoing lane, there is no, uh, use of the opposite travel lane.
Uh, and, and one of the reasons why that was necessary was, uh, the data that, that we were working off of assumed a larger truck than the town actually would utilize to access the property. Once we put that information in, we were able to, uh, be responsive to the fire chief.
Correct. Um, the pathlines have been updated on the plan for clarity. Uh, the truck overhangs are colored blue and dash lines in the tire tracks are colored in red, uh, with solid lines. Um, hatch has been added to the plan with a call out with the note, area between buildings should be kept clear at all times. Uh, there, uh, the fire department is very clear on what they were asking for, so I think this is a pretty, uh, good letter to, a simple letter to, for them to approve.
Can you? Can you clarify for us, uh, the one item that I saw that was really significant was the uh, roadway in excess of a hundred and fifty feet in length and needing a turnaround for the fire truck. How was that addressed?
So that was addressed with the swept path analysis, so they can go and turn around and they can, uh, they can have access in and out of the building. Uh, you had mentioned the hundred and fifty foot, is that what you, is that what you said?
Yeah, a, a, a driveway that exceeds a hundred and fifty feet in length is required to have a turnaround.
So the way that we, well, we have the turnaround, so we, we showed that with the swept path analysis. I think they wanted access for, within a hundred feet of all parts of the building? So we talked to them about that, because you can park it each end of the building, and it's no further than a hundred and fifty feet around the building. Does that answer your question?
I think so. And did we get a letter from the fire department?
Not the second one, no.
Second one. Not in response to their response.
That's what the attorney.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're.
Waiting for agreement, but we don't, we do not have that letter.
I know what you're gonna tell me, uh.
We're gonna, we're gonna deliberate, so I'm not gonna tell you anything yet.
It's, we just, again, as I mentioned before, we've been burned, and we understand you have done.
Well, let's deliberate, that's your, so.
That's fine.
Well, I, I don't want to waste everyone's time. Um, I, I guess.
It's still an open public hearing, so if there's citizen comment, Mike, do you have any comment?
Nope.
Sam, I know.
I won't do my normal.
Um, we've heard Ms. Moran, I cannot vote, I'm not eligible. Uh, Jane, comment?
Yeah, the, uh, those are, they might come.
What, no action? What action? Any?
Um, well, I, I think that we should wait until we've got fire department approval before our vote. We've, as, as it's been pointed out, we just have been burned, and um, that's the clean way to do it.
Mr. Cudier. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I, I would speculate that if, if the only thing outstanding is that fire department letter and, um, our vote, that the applicant and, uh, associated, uh, professionals could attend that meeting remotely.
Okay.
To save you on, on.
You can always, you're always welcome to attend remotely, so you don't have to drive down. Uh, Mr. Cudier?
Um, I, I will just weigh in to echo what Mr. Grady said in terms of the site plan changes relative to the fire department. We did review them. Um, they are in keeping with the fire department's request, so there is no reason to believe the fire department would reject them or want any further alterations. Uh, they do meet NFPA one, um, they do have, because it does exceed a hundred and fifty feet in length, they do need a. Uh, they do meet NFPA one. Um, they do have, because it does exceed a hundred and fifty feet in length, they do need a turnaround. But it's not a traditional roundabout like some may put in their mind. They do allow what's called a hammerhead turnaround, which he did prove with.
The three point.
Right, a three-point turn, exactly. Um, so technically speaking, they should, they're they're this close to being done.
Uh, Mr. Perry?
No comment.
Uh, any citizen comment? I have a couple of comments. Right. Mr. Burke?
I I guess I would just uh.
Wait, state your name, spell your name, please, for the record.
Sure, uh, my name is Richard Burke, uh, Richard, R I C H A R D Burke. B U R K E.
Thank you.
Uh, with Oregon Burke and Franco in New Bedford. Um, I represent the fieldings who are butters to the project. Um, I guess a couple of things that I would.
Two, two twenty-seven thirty-one?
It's not Taco Bell.
A Taco Bell.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
That's the next item.
Right, that's okay, that's okay. Okay, my input to the, even though I'm not eligible, um, one of the things that we'll do one, once we take a vote. Um, and assuming a positive outcome, we will need to write a findings of fact and uh conditions of approval. Um, I suggest that we begin work on that. As in the past, we will invite the applicant and citizens.
Can I interrupt you for one second? Zoom is doing something on my computer and I just want to make sure we're still operating.
Jane, can you, Jane, you can hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, Josh is reporting some kind of.
Just have a. It says it's connecting, so.
Technical functions.
I guess continue per proceed.
Okay, so I am, I am. We we will need to write uh conditions of approval, assuming it gets approved. Findings of fact, we always invite the applicant to submit your input. What what you think appropriate conditions of approval are. We have standard. Conditions of approval that we always apply that will. Will apply, we'll get that uh in partnership with the planning office. Uh, Mr. Cudiero has often recommended through discussion, but any thoughts you have, we're welcome to hear from you again. Um, and then the board members. Uh, so we could get started on that now, anticipating we're like. This close.
I I very much appreciate that. Thank you very much.
There is a standard format that that we have. Uh, put out uh. On the, I don't, it it, given that the town rearranged the website, I'm not sure exactly where it is. But um, we wrote some guidance to people who wanted to submit. You as an attorney know how to. Uh, write findings of fact and conditions of approval, but we wrote a guidance for citizens. Tie it to the bylaw. Make it actionable, um. Not pie in the sky, those kind of things. But if you if you want to see the guidance we wrote, Josh, Josh can help us with that.
Email it over.
And we should also try and figure out where on the. We- website that ended up, so we can point people to it. Um, so that would speed up the process because once we take a vote, we still have sixty days to. Write all that, but if we have all the input. Blowing in, it makes it easier for us to. To write that.
Um, okay.
And we will, we will also build it from the record as well.
Fantastic. I'll probably take a stab at that.
Great, please. Uh, what did we have in here, anything? Um. We have the Conservation Commission final approval, we have peer review resolution, we have the parking determination.
Guys' plans.
We have the whatever, yeah, we we need to, for the findings of fact, what are the the set of plans, the final dated set of plans that we're all approving? Um, stormwater, we're good on stormwater. Um. Uh, we will need an as-built plan that will be a condition. Um. Yes, we always need to remember, guys, when we're doing conditions, we want as-built plans. Um, even though I can't get you the as-built plan for my house, Josh is.
It's in your standard conditions, I know.
Yes.
Yeah.
So good, I think we're ready. So I'm looking for a motion, I think. Jane, this could be quick if you want to add this to the twentieth, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I think it could be quick and I think we probably could add it to the twentieth.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to continue. Wait, I gotta read it into the record. Uh, four twenty-five. Plan twenty-five dash five Kevin Welch site plan review twenty-seven thirty-one Cranberry Highway. To the regularly scheduled planning board meeting of. Uh, October twentieth. Which will be.
Actually, I'm I'm gonna change that from regularly scheduled ten-twenty meeting. That is a. An off-cycle meeting that.
Of sight, yes. But it it.
It's a regular meeting, but it is off-cycle.
It will be in room twenty-seven again, correct?
Yes, yes, so moved. Uh, second?
Second.
Second from Mike, uh, moved by Julie Moran, second by Mike Baptiste, roll call.
Sam did.
Oh.
And then Mike.
Okay, and then.
Uh, Jane, Jane Gleason, aye.
Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye, and uh Carl Schultz, five votes, aye. If you could then close the loop with the planning office, just a letter saying.
Absolutely.
We request a continuance.
And and that uh to the twentieth.
But that, we, I assume that's okay.
That's my notification was accurate, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Understood.
Thank you. Thank you, good night.
You.
Yeah, you're up. Okay, um, next item, uh, eight dash twenty-five DDO New England. LLC site plan review twenty-four twenty-four Cranberry Highway. Uh, and this one, we did close the public hearing.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
So.
That's the problem.
But so. Before I, before I ask you to speak, because technically your public hearing is closed, I'm gonna ask for the board to deliberate. As we close this and we were going to work tonight on conditions. Uh, of approval and actually uh to vote, because we didn't actually vote. On the approval. Um, however, um, one of the conditions is going to be. Uh, fire department approval, which you did not get, I understand, the letter. Exchange that's going on. It may not be a big deal, but it's it's not. Done. So please don't speak. So Jane, how would you like to proceed with this? So we could either. We can't reopen the public hearing, but we can, I I don't know what you want to do exactly.
I am thinking that what we need to do is to resolve the fire department issue before we take our final vote. I just, I. I'm very concerned about taking that vote afterwards.
I'm.
So that's my.
What do you mean?
Inclination.
Oh, you want to wait and take it afterwards?
I want to take the vote after we resolve.
You're not, you're not going to look, well, it it's then gonna depend on what kind of modifications they have to make. Um. To meet the fire, if any, to meet the fire department plan, so they would then have to submit a new application. So we cannot rule on, I don't think we can rule on any changes. Right, Josh? Or or how how would we, I I understand what you're saying, then we could sort of. Soft.
The hearing.
Well, I guess there's.
Hearing is closed.
There's one question of if the fire department letter actually required to change the plan. I did not get a chance.
We don't know that yet.
Yeah.
But we got a response. Yeah, and from the fire department.
Well, not a second response from the fire department.
Yeah.
We did get a second response from the fire department.
I have not.
Okay, and we did get, um, we got a a drawing first and then we got a response from the fire department. As far as I understand, and as far as what I saw, that's my interpretation of it and the.
Yep, I I sent the review to you guys at two thirty this.
I did not.
We have September twenty-ninth letter from the fire department. We then have an exchange of emails on the first of October. And then there was a third, then there was a response this afternoon.
There was a response by email this afternoon and there was a drawing somewhere in there. I'm not sure of the date and how it fits into.
That's a revised plan.
Well, the the plan is, let me, let me point out that the plan has added the dimensions, so that's not a material change. To the drawings as far as I see it, and then there were two, three clarifying notes. Um, at the the curb cut. Uh, the radii.
I'm gonna defer to you. That is not the plan of record. Um, that is a new plan that may not be material or may not be significant.
Yep.
Even a minor modification. And here's why I'm like walking the fine line.
Yeah.
I intermodif- on, I can't vote on this plan. They submit a minor modification, I can then vote on the modification. So I become eligible to vote on that.
Yeah.
But. I'm gonna defer. How do you want to proceed? Uh, with this item?
Well, where it's where it's a fire department issue, it's not a a discretionary design change or a code-related design change, where it's fire department related. I would like to see it. Be voted on. After we have resolved the fire department issue.
I don't understand what that means.
I I think his issue was resolved in the email that Captain Krabs sent this afternoon.
That's what I think, too.
Right, so so just to back up a little bit, the fire department had two concerns. It was they could not determine what the hose length was around the building, so they asked for dimensions to be added to the plan of the building. And then there was a question of the curb radii coming out onto Tell Road. Now, I I didn't get a chance to fully review the plans, but did the curb design change? Or you just provided a response to the fire department saying. We have an adequate curb radii already presented and and we're clear, or in our opinion, we're clear to move forward.
Right, and then did we get an answer back from?
And then we got an answer back from the fire department this afternoon. He says, yes, the below comments have been resolved, the questions we brought forward, and we have no further questions at this time. Thank you for providing, and they also asked for um. Delivery schedule of, you know, what would happen with the Taco Bell. They provided the delivery schedule and the fire department thanked them for providing that information. So in my opinion, the plan has not changed at all and uh the fire department is satisfied.
So.
That would be my opinion as well. Um, the. Thing that might hold that up is that some of the board members, well, the, some of the material was received late and some of the board members. Have not had a chance to put their own eyes on it.
I'm gonna recuse myself because I can't vote.
Yeah, I.
Yeah, I. I saw Brithely just looked at it and thank you for the summary, so I'm gonna trust that summary as well. So really, the only thing is adding dimensions, basically.
Oh, well, that was concerned.
To the plan.
Yeah, I I think we could easily swap out that singular page in the plan set and and still be in the same place right now. I think it's adequate.
Yeah.
Right, one more uh procedural issue is Ms. Moran has not filed. With the clerk that she reviewed the um. Video, so at this point, I don't know if she's eligible to vote, if we voted tonight.
I did re- I did review the video. I haven't filed the form apparently.
Thanks.
So again, procedural question.
Still the majority vote. Oh, you can't vote.
I can't vote, so.
The majority is Mike, Sam and and Jane.
So it depends on, how how, Jane, how do you want to proceed? You want to just proceed uh and uh. Discuss uh conditions of approval. We did get. We did get conditions from the applicant, we did get conditions from Mr. Burke. Um, I don't think we got conditions from anybody else. Uh, we do have standard conditions. I have conditions that I have. Uh, which I will offer to the board as a citizen. Um. And the standard conditions, so Jane, we could um deliberate on the conditions if you'd like and enumerate them or. How do you, or I mean, which we then take, read each of the conditions and, or how would you like to proceed, or just take them in under advisement and.
So I think that if the voting members of the board um are comfortable with. Uh. Acknowledging the receipt of uh approval from the fire department that they're satisfied. That we could go ahead with a vote.
I'm good. Alright, so I, um, as chair, I can, I'll look for a motion to, what, can you restate that as a motion, Jane, and then we can move forward?
I move the, or.
I think Jane was looking for the opinion of Mike and Sam on if they wanted to proceed.
Do you want to proceed, Mike?
If they were comfortable with what they have heard of the fire department's approval.
Okay, that wasn't a motion then, go ahead.
No, that isn't a motion.
Sam said he was comfortable, I think, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Leaves it up to you as the other voting.
Thing is, I hope this serves as a lesson, though, is the. Getting sloppy about not receiving letters in time. And back and forth, he's just gonna come back and bite us, like you said.
Yep.
This minute matters.
Bad, bad situation.
Wait, um, I have another issue, though. Mike missed the last meeting as well. Um, did you certify?
So the both Julie and Mike would need to certify that they've looked at the video.
Yes.
So we can't vote. You're right.
Apologies.
You've heard about last week.
No.
Yes.
Oh, because they didn't appear.
Oh, you weren't here last week. Okay, you were, but never mind, I'm I'm.
No worries.
Thank you, I'm walking, never mind, we're good, everybody was at the.
Okay.
Twenty is when I did.
Okay.
We're here last.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, you were, we we skipped over.
I was just gonna look at the agenda from the twenties. Okay.
Yes, so it was not, the last one was the. Six.
Eighth of September.
We have four to kind.
The eighth of September.
For the convo, yes, okay. So now let's have a motion that you were saying, Jane, that we accept the. Trans. Communications and transmittals and then that we move to a vote.
Yes, that's so moved.
Hey, Josh has raised his.
So the state law actually says that you need to certify with the clerk of the board, not the town clerk. So.
Myself.
Well, that's that's news to me because.
No, that's, this is what the state law said.
And I'd be sending the letters to the clerk of the town.
No, it's the clerk of the board, so.
We don't have to do it, we don't have to.
Mike, Mike could write a letter right now and.
If he, if he, it's not an issue.
Okay, so just. And for for.
Sounds like it, not an issue.
Never missed a bill. My first miss.
You want to move to a vote, what you would like.
Yeah.
Go ahead, state all that so we can capture the motion and then.
I move to uh vote to approve the site plan review for. Uh, twenty-four twenty-four Cranberry Highway, uh, project eight dash twenty-five DDO New England LLC. Uh, Taco Bell, um. Based on receipt of. Um, approval from the fire department of the proposed plan.
Thank it. A roll call vote, starting with Ms. Gleason?
Uh, Jane Gleason, aye.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And uh Carl Schultz abstains as being ineligible. So the motion passes four zero zero and now we will need to.
Four zero one.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Well, I don't know, if I'm not eligible, do I even get to abstain?
It's still.
Four zero one then. Four is it, four zero one?
Correct.
Okay, um. Alright, so then we need to take under advisement the standard conditions, the conditions that we received from Mr. Burke. The conditions we received from the applicant. Um. Input we had from Phil and the town, and we have to write the findings of fact and the order of conditions.
Which is of approval.
I'm sorry.
Renewal treatment.
I keep kidding. Why it's order of conditions from CONCOM and conditions of approval from us, this.
Okay.
Great.
Agreed.
So, good, thank you for your time and we will work on that and keep you notified. Thank you for showing up, Mr. Burke. Oh, um, just one. Comment. Uh, I did receive a letter from Mr. Burke, we all received the letter from Mr. Burke today. Uh, about uh blocking access to the right of way. My opinion and I'll. That's not a planning board issue, that's an issue for the. The building inspector, correct? The zoning enforcement officer.
If one of your conditions is. That the applicant cannot block the right of way. Then if they were in violation, it would become an enforcement order.
Yes.
Okay, and that that, but it's already, I don't understand how they've started construction without approval, so.
They put up offense.
But it's blocking the right of way, so we can't.
Yeah, I.
It's not, it's actually not.
Yeah, I drove, I drove by there today. It looks like it's on the line of the easement, not the property line. I will say the photo that Attorney Burke provided. The fence gate was swung open into the easement, so that, at that point, it was blocking. I drove by today and the the fence was not blocking the easement.
Alright, so we will.
The gate was.
We we can write that in our order of conditions, but. We we can write that in our order of conditions, but our order of conditions do not apply yet, so I don't know who has jurisdiction between now and then.
Yeah, I agree.
We don't have jurisdiction, so.
We don't.
Nor do you have rights to do anything. Right, alright.
You can leave.
The two property owners have whatever rights they have.
So my whole point in summarizing this is, planning board can't resolve it. You guys either need to go to court or amicably amicably resolve this.
Yes.
You're you're representing.
And I wanna, can I add, can I add something, Carl?
Yes. Please, yes, yes, go.
Um, I would add that the the buffer is gonna have to be addressed as well. That part, one of our conditions is that the buffer is something that's gonna have to be adhered to unless a variance is achieved.
It can't get a variance at this point. We've already approved this plan, so.
Right, so they would ha- it would have to be a separate thing.
Right, um so we write those order of conditions and not, excuse me, conditions of approval.
Can I address that point just to clarify or?
Let's let's not get into deliberation, so.
It's not a deliberation. I mean, respectfully, I just, I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page.
Jane, do you wanna you wanna allow, do you wanna allow the applicant to speak? And your concern, you want to need to allow that? It's not a public hearing and other than Mr. Burke is not really here to hear comments.
I think you wanna clarify something.
Looking for direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, I mean, if 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 the board is saying that the variance has granted and has applied for it does not absolve the requirement to to meet the landscaping buffer on the east side of the property. I don't wanna wait another month if we have to get another variance. The argument, I think our position is that it was granted and therefore it, you know, the 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 planning board is granting site plan approval can't then impose a a landscape buffer along that property. Does that make sense?
I I understand your opinion and when we write the the conditions of approval. Certainly share a draft with everyone, right? We normally share a draft.
Yes.
You could, yeah. Nothing says you have to, but yeah. Historically, you have.
We we are trying to be open, transparent, collaborative, trying to balance everybody's needs. Think that's our goal, so when we get a draft, I depending on the chair's discretion.
I think your deadline is early November. I'd have to check on the exact date. I wanna say it's it's either the seventh or the tenth. I have, I calculated it, it's just written downstairs.
Okay, great. So we'll we'll take all the input that we got and draft the conditions of approval. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all, thank you.
But I did wanna address your letter. But my point was, I don't think we have jurisdiction, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, alright, um. This is Bill, yeah, alright. I'm gonna tell him to come in and get set. I'm gonna take, request a five minute recess. We don't have to stop recording. I'm gonna call the applicant in. I'm gonna go take care of some. Yo, come on in, I'm gonna just. Okay. Just paying attention outside.
Why didn't you sit up at the uh table here as well?
Well, I was just picking up my.
Gotcha, gotcha.
What's that, Julie?
Um, you're gonna do, are you gonna back with the zoning bylaws today? Yes.
Oh, I think so. Do you care where we sit?
That's perfect.
Alright, thank you. I can bring these as well. Put it on the easel.
I think that's where it's gonna.
I think you can ask a quick question.
Yes, you absolutely.
Is that property we're talking about, the all these properties of the facility across the street, honestly? Anything in between or is this one?
Thank you, um, we're gonna In between?
Is there anything in between the two properties?
Like that's our site right here and then the south coast facility across the street from it? There's nothing between there. Uh, okay. Ladies and gentlemen's, uh, there's ten twenty-five, Plan twenty-five tens, Concert Group Inc., Site Plan Review Six Recovery Road, um, you know, folks representing the applicant, so state your name, spell your name, and if you're gonna get professional testimony, raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth of this office.
Okay, Bill Madden, J F Engineering. And um, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Thank you.
I'm Scott Arella, that's with Concert Group, and if I am all the fun, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Oh, um, I think what I'd like to do is I think there were some late late, my word late, not pejorative, uh submissions, uh updates and and changes that I'm not sure everyone has had a chance to review. So Mr. Madden, if you could review uh what we got and then we'll decide. Uh, and Phil, did you have a chance to see those?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think what you're referring to are my comments, which came in really late today as a result of Mr. Madden's changes from last week, yes.
Okay, oh. No, no, there there were plan changes though as well, right? Was that the other project?
I mean, there were some minor plan changes, nothing major, nothing terribly significant.
I saw a whole letter from you. Was that the other project?
Um, no, there was a, there was a letter that we responded to the to the first set of uh peer review.
So why don't you summarize where we're at, cuz I could be confused. I'm often confused. Summarize where we're at, okay. And you're satisfied that you're comfortable where we're at?
I uh I won't say comfortable. I know where we're at. I think, Mr. Chair, you might be conflating a couple of different applications, so we'll let Bill sort of clarify.
That's why I asked if I was conflating your other application.
My other application, what other, what other application?
Too east.
Too east.
Oh, that one, yeah, don't get them confused.
That's not, that's put off anyway till the twentieth.
Alright, so why don't, why don't we get on track and I follow.
Okay, I'm just trying to put my hands on the uh the review comments here. Alright, well, we provided um some comments on the initial review, and I guess before, you know, we get started on that, what we we talked about at the meeting, we talked about like some traffic issues that we I think might have dismissed, talked about the employees, we talked about the number of staff that we would have. Um, there was some discussion on trash pickup, how we're gonna deal with that because we didn't provide any receptacles outside because it's all gonna be handled by contractor cleaning the buildings, what have you. You're looking for the fire department review letter, which we still have not received. And uh we were talking about a use variance of of some sort, and I think maybe that's where, that's where we'd like to start just for discussion points tonight. You know, as part of the information that we submitted, the revised informa- information that we submitted, there was uh, there was a letter that was prepared by Concert that talked about the zoning classification of the property. And, you know, I, what we'd like to do is avoid the need to go to the to the to the zoning board of appeals for our variance for that the storage develop, the element of storage on on the facility. So um Concert put together a a a letter and, you know, discussed wholesale business and it also discussed light manufacturing um in the in the facility and what have you as far as what might take place. And I think Phil commented on the use that he didn't really have an issue issue with the use, but we just like to have that kind of, um, I think we'd like to try to nail that down and see where we stand on it, because um if we don't need to go to the zoning board of appeals, we can av- we can avoid doing that pretty pretty readily, and as far as as far as.
Can I ask a question on that point? What did Mr. Turner's letter of denial say? I don't have it in front of me.
He said, um, the proposed use of the structure is office space and warehouse storage. Um, the proposed storage will require variance from the zoning board of appeals and it's not an allowed use.
Yeah, okay, so I don't, so uh, so you wanted to resolve that point, is my do. So to the tenant, to Mr. Farady, do we need to go back and get a new ruling for Mr. Turner? Cuz we, I don't know, can we resolve the use issue as a planning board? That's my question. Do we have authority to resolve the use issue?
In my opinion, you can make the determinates determination of the use that's being allowed.
So is that what you'd like to do, Jane? Um, proceed that way without going, without right now seeking a variance or Mr. Turner additional input?
It seems that we're gonna need some input from Mr. Turner because he's got, he's got some say in this and he has.
Well, did you hear what Josh said? He Josh thought we can make the determination, but I don't wanna.
Will will turn to be comfortable with that or, you know, to Mr. Madden and his client have an issue, they're coming for him again, and he says
So trying to resolve your issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you've, if you've gotta go before Mr. Turner to get a building permit and he maintains that his initial ruling on it stands, then you've got a problem.
Um, if I just offer a thought, I mean, in front of the zoning board of appeals, this happens on a fairly regular basis where he may give a letter and state you need a variance, and the zoning board of appeals would may rule that well, you actually don't need a variance, you really need a special permit or the variance doesn't apply, so they, their decision making is is modified in many instances from from Paul's, from Paul's request.
This would normally this kind of application has gone to them in the past, so si- similar application, but I guess, you know.
I'm just trying to make sure. No, that's that's fine. I mean, we're on the same, I think we're all talking the same language and on the same track. I'm just trying, you know, we'd like to try to get this one behind us, and I think that we could probably avoid the need to um to obtain the variance, whether we wanna consider it um light manufacturing or or not. I think that if, you know, a complete reading of the zoning bylaws, Article three, you know, that that identifies our uses, the uses are, the uses are tabulated in in some instance, but if you go to, if you go to section thirty-four, three four zero point nine, they have, it's on page twenty-one.
I just can't turn that.
On page, on page twenty-one, you know, the light manufacturing is discussed and um as is industrial uses just as a whole. And I think the Conserve um memorandum that was part of our app, not application, but part of the submittal that we made on the plan revisions, you know, there was a discussion in there about light manufacturing, and I'll leave that if Scott wants to elaborate a little bit more on that.
And then you're focusing on the incidental storage. Yes. Clause for light manufacturing.
Yes.
Yeah, I I mean, I th- I think that that incidental storage is exactly what you've been describing, that it's not, you're not a warehouse.
Co- correct.
And, you know, I I think as a secondary point, I mean, I I don't wanna belabor it because, I mean, I think we're in sounds like we're in agreement with that regard, but if you go down just to the definition, when it says industrial, I mean, it it's even more clear there. It's warehousing, storage, distribution, shipping and other related uses. So it's an element of um of an industrial use that would, I think you would normally find in any type of industrial use. So
just, just while we're on this topic, uh moving to storage, because you're not gonna have containers, there's not gonna be, there's no containers, you're you're not gonna um, no forty foot long containers, no six months of storage. So it doesn't sound like a storage facility under that definition.
And and it's not, it's not, it's not intended to be, um, the storage area, you know, they'll take product in, they'll store it inside the building, it'll get redistributed to a project site someplace and, you know, whether it requires any um modifications within the facility light modifications within the facility that would fall under light manufacturing or the storage of it and the redistribution of it under the under the industrial category, we think that it it fits right in there.
Great, so.
I know you've described it previously, right, and that, yeah.
Okay, so then to Josh and then Mr. Kadir, can then in our finding of fact procedurally, as Mr. Madden said, our finding of fact would be that this is light manufacturing and that the storage described uh meets the requirement of incidental storage. And what was the other clause? So that would be how we respond to Mr. Turner's um comment through a finding of fact.
Right, correct, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, um, is is that what we think that you might be inclined to do?
Looking, Mike, are you, where you, what's your thought?
I think Phil's hit it right on the head. I kinda agree with him.
Jane, so then then we could let the applicant move forward, assuming that we dealt with the use issue?
I think so, I think so. I thi- I think we've, we've parsed out that this really is a light manufacturing situation and not an industrial or storage, or it's not a storage facility.
Alright, and then note for the record when we write our, that we need to state that in our finding of fact.
And it goes without saying, if that should change, then we're in a
At least then you've been clear in terms of how we reached our decision.
Yes.
Most, there shouldn't be any ambiguity. At least, we know how we got there.
Yeah.
Okay, is that satisfying your?
I I think I I just, it's it satisfies my concerns, Scott, are you, is that? With you guys as.
Yeah, seems to be.
Yeah, okay, so I I you asked, I think, I don't think we need to pound on this anymore at the moment.
Okay.
That's, that's um, that's fine.
Let's see, you're okay with that, Mr. Kadir?
I I I am, I really, the the letter that we provided, the comment was really to initiate this discussion, just to make sure it was clarified because of some of the ambiguity between the terms and the zoning bylaws. The Concert letter clarifies it was to do exactly that, and I think you've reached the right conclusion.
Thank you.
Alright. We need to vote on that?
Uh, when when we do the finding of fact, we do.
You're comfortable, Bill, with that? Yes, yes, yeah, absolutely. Um, one of the other items that we talked about was design standards as far as the um landscape and parking and what have you, so I think that those were 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 addressed, I mean, we we
Can you see that, Jane? Or I don't know what you're seeing.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm seeing from up in the upper corner, looking toward uh um, Sam and Mr. Cordero.
Wait, which way goes for you?
That that way I could see, but it's a little small. Maybe Josh can share it. I just pulled up a set of drawings dated nine twenty-five, is it after that?
No, nine twenty-nine.
Oh, nine twenty-nine, this one was dated nine twenty-five, I believe.
That's what I meant, there were new drawings uploaded to the land site on open.
And I believe this was the latest. Oh, nine twenty-seven is the date on the stamp. Nine twenty-five is the revision date.
There should be another one, I think. I thought I saw it, but.
You're talking about the site plans?
Yeah, I'm looking at your drawings and Bill, your stamp is dated nine twenty-seven twenty-five, but the revision date, revision number one is Revision number one is dated nine twenty-five, twenty-five. Is that this drawing?
Yes, I was, I was referring to the architecturals, Jane, not necessarily our plans.
Oh, architecturals, I did not. See any architecturals. Are they on the?
Yeah, I thought they got uploaded.
Oh, here we go, here we go. There we go, okay, got it. Yep.
So, um, so with respect to that, I guess Phil has a couple of. Points on the granite curbing, if it's necessary at the throat of the parking lot as it enters. As it enters into the um, to the facility. Our only comment is there's no, there's no granite down there on, at the intersection of Recovery Road and, what is it, Patterson Brook Road? And um. Even I think the other facility across the street has a tumidous concrete curb and. What have you, berm rather, not necessarily curb, so um, if we're required to place it, I suppose um. If we're required to do, we'll do it, but you know, keep, in keeping with what's out there. You know, we would, we would. We'd like not to. Um, the third art, the, the third article was the, about the number of parking spaces in the parking table. Um, the comment came back that it appeared that. We were utilizing the, the two spaces that are in front of the overhead garage doors as part of our parking count. Well, um. We're, we're told that we should not be doing that, so. I suspect we were. We would be short two spaces in that regard. But the uh, I think that what we did is when we went to. The light industrial, it reduced the amount of parking that we needed. Equal to what we, what we, what we need for the site. But there was another comment about. Off-site parking, because we have the other building that's gonna be future in our building and whether or not we could be. Um, granted some relief, the fifteen percent relief. For use of neighboring, neighboring parking, so that's one thing that we'd be looking at. There's really no other opportunity for us to um, to. Place any other parking on that site. So that would probably be our um, that would probably be our only option to request that from, from you. Um, so that was uh. With the parking, there was another discussion point. With respect to the landscape architecture. And the, the need for a landscape architect stamp on the plan, um. If you're gonna, you know, we defer to you on that, if you require us to have it. On the plan, we, we're happy to. Take care of that for you. Um, like to think that we've done enough and what have you, and it's very similar nature, but I understand what the bylaw says and. I can tell you that we've had problems with other applications where we didn't get the landscape architect stamp and it's. Was a little.
I actually think it may have been more your.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think you may be familiar with the one.
Yeah, um. Probably am, and I mean, if it's, if it's going to be required, which I sent, said it will, um, then we'll just take care of that and. That'll be included with the final set of plans that we submit.
You have to be consistent.
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, I, we understand. Um, landscape buffers, um, we, I think it all runs hand in hand with the landscaping. Feature, we'll take, we, we will take care of that. Um, let's see, the. Number six was the land use permitting on fifteen fifty, relative to fifteen fifty-two. Um, there's really nothing else that we were asked to do on that, the building. Building floor plans and the elevations were, were included with that. With that submission, so we think that we would, we'll be all set with that. The other comment about the trash and the recycling, you know, that'll all be handled by the uh. The maintenance crew that'll be cleaning, doing the building maintenance, cleaning and what have you. Um, inside and I think all in the. The routine maintenance, the building isn't really maintenance.
Can I just go back? To fifteen fifty-two? Only because I can't find it in the bylaws.
He means fifteen twenty-two.
Oh, did I get the wrong, wrong citation?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's good.
Fifteen twenty-two.
Okay, good. I can find fifteen, no, I can't even find a fifteen twenty. In the version I'm looking. Looking at the. Have you signed it fifteen? April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. What's the current date, Josh? I may have an older version.
Yeah. Is it October twenty-fourth?
It's the October version, I probably just didn't bring it right.
October twenty-fourth or twenty-thirty.
That's what I thought. I, I brought the wrong version, so don't forget my comment, I'll, if, if I can't find it in the new version, then I'll.
Okay, and I think that um. The way we were hoping to manage it was. Acceptable to A and M when they did the review, if we scored for the re- review letter. Um, let's see. Yeah, but as far as the surveyor stamp, same thing with the surveyor stamp, we, we just internally just. Don't like stamping all these intermediate sets of plans, you know, the initial filing is fine, the final is fine, but. Understood where everybody's coming from on that and. Um, we will have the surveyor stamp put on the surveyor and plan.
When you have the final.
Yes.
That'll be good, you don't have to do.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you're right, so just, when you said we're done. This is the one we want you to vote on.
Yep.
Cool, I think that makes sense, right?
For sure.
Yeah, you don't need to pay the guy to.
Yeah.
I think we're there, I think we're there anyway with our survey work.
Jane, are you okay with that?
I totally agree with that, you don't want drawings out there with stamps all over them that are preliminary. It really confuses the matter.
It does, and thank you for that, that's um. That's good. Um, number eight, we're talking about the stormwater handbook and, and stormwater management. I think we have no issue with the rain garden and the, the peak elevations of the water in the rain garden. For its different um, different storm events. Um, let's see, the next one was uh, test pits to confirm soil types in the field. Um, when the construction was occurring. Uh, to ensure that it matches up our, our plans and no objection.
There's no fifteen twenty-two in here either.
Fifteen fifty-two is.
Well, we're back to fifty.
Is fifty, is site.
It sounds, it sounds like I, I might have pooted the reference.
Okay, fifteen fifty-two is in this version. Back on track, thank you.
All right. Um. Let's see, the seasonal high water table. Issue. You know, with those monitoring calculations, I, we attached something to go back to Phil on, on that, with those groundwater monitoring calculations, they weren't. They're not necessarily based on the hundred-year event, they're based on a smaller storm event, I wanna say that the model that. That was put out by USGS was based on like a one-point-two-five inch rainfall event, we use. We use two in our calculations, a, a two, a two-inch rainfall event. But uh, that's where the two-inch rainfall event came from, is that was a selected one that was a little bit. Little bit more significant than the one-point-two-five that was used, but. A reasonable expectation of a rainfall event around here, we don't get a tremendous amount of rainfall that's in excess of two inches. Like ninety percent of them, I believe, are less than one. But in any event, that's what we did and we'll defer to A and M for their review on, on that one. Um, comment number eleven, the eighty percent TSS removal, I think we modified our TSS removal worksheet. To um. To mimic, well, to comply with the fifty percent. Limitation as opposed to the eighty that we had originally used. Um, so there was no further comment needed on that one. Um, the two loading spaces. We um, they were asked to be dimensioned and what have you, so we dimensioned those out for. And, and we put them on the plan, so we limited those areas to thirty-five feet, so like for a thirty-five-foot box truck, I think is what we were discussing. At the last meeting, but it's um, the space is, is delineated. To that, to that dimension on the plan. Um, so there's nothing left, left to do with that. Let's see, the grades between the buildings, that was, that was addressed and um, A and M. Has no further comment on that, that was resolved. The um, the location of the electrical boxes was in one of those areas where. It may have been subject to a little bit of pounding, that's been modified and A and M is in agreement with that, according to the. The response. Um, let's see, the Wareham Fire District, we have not received that letter from Wareham Fire. Um, yet, and the last one, well, I guess that's the last one. Uh, the BBW, we have a um. I think we, we, what do we have here? We have an active order of conditions for, for that project. So, um. Should take that back, we filed it, we have a continued hearing on that, on that order. Scheduled for the fifteenth, we don't have it yet, we expecting it on the fifteenth. And um, there's nothing else for us to do on that other than um, wait for. On comes. This final sign-off on it, which we're not expecting to be a problem, they have done it once before, light-type project, um, same location. So I think we've accomplished pretty much everything that we were. Needing to accomplish, a couple of minor items that we need to go through with Phil and um. Provide him with the replies, get those letters for you. From the, from the.
Final set of plans.
Yep. I think that, I think that's about it, unless I might have missed something, but. I don't, I get most of them, so.
I'm sorry, I'm waiting for Mr. Madden to signal that he's done and then I'll.
I'm done.
So. Bill.
Thank you, um. Mr. Madden accurately reflected the record, um, we obviously just issued the letter today to try to be in front of the meeting, so. As always, apologies that you're seeing at the eleventh hour, but he did accurately depict it. I, I would want to just take an extra moment to just draw the board's attention to a couple of matters. That you ultimately have to render a decision on. Um, and, and Bill touched upon them very quickly, so. In, in order of um, technical to sort of zoning compliant, uh, what I would ask Mr. Madden to review. Is the comment relative to the groundwater mounting analysis and the stormwater system on the site. I understand what he's suggesting by using two inches versus the one-point-two-five. So, sort of technical matters, I won't get in the weeds on that. But I will just draw his attention that because it is the only drainage system on site. And it is handling one hundred percent of the stormwater volume. That the stormwater management handbook does say that the volume needs to be. The total volume that that system will be exposed to. And if there's a way to change the analysis just to reflect that, it's likely will not be a problem. But we want to make sure that it's not a problem at, at the end of the day, if you could just run those numbers on it. Jumping backwards then, the curbs, the bylaw is. I, in this zone is written sort of nebulously as to the applicability of curbing here. And I noted because it is in the section that's applicable to these site plans. Uh, because of the zone that he's in, it does reference that street curbs um, should be granite. Uh, I'm not going to argue the merits as to whether they should be granted or not be granted, whether it should be curbing at all. The bylaw says there should be granite curbing. Maybe the bylaw is a little bit flawed in terms of the application of it because it references. Sort of indistinguishably uh, streets as in being a subdivision street versus. The consideration is maybe the, the entry at the street for their driveway is maybe how the curbing is, is applied. Uh, so the board may wanna take a minute to think about that as part of the decision. Granite curbing, despite being noted in the bylaw, may be overkill here, given what else is on Recovery Road. So if the board's willing to consider Bill's condition that maybe it's Cape Cod buring or maybe no curbing at all. Uh, I think that might be right, but that has to be a discussion that takes place here, simply because of the way the bylaw um, is written. Um, and then perhaps landing on probably the biggest issue that we just wanna draw to the board's attention. Is how they're approaching the landscape buffers for the site, obviously the plan needs to be stamped finally at the end of the day. We'll defer to that all day, as long as the final plan is submitted while the public hearing is still open. Um, that's, that's the angle that we're trying to push for the board, is to make sure that that plan is in your hands before the board. Uh, closes the public hearing, so it's not dealt with as a condition afterwards. But in this particular case, um, the intent from the landscaping plan is to preserve some trees on the northerly property line. And allow those to serve as the ten-foot landscape buffer required under zoning. Your zoning bylaw does allow for that, if there are trees that can be preserved that can mitigate the landscape buffer. You can approve that, um, our note here is that. Based on the site visit, based on the photographs that are available, there does not appear to be many trees that would actually be in that landscape buffer. Um, so the applicant has proposed that they will, they are willing to supplement the buffer. But then we reference for you, for the board's consideration. How does supplementation take place and when does it take place? You know, they're obviously willing to agree to a condition that will supplement if there's nothing there. But I, I'm recommending that maybe we work a little bit on a clearer condition, so everybody leaves the room knowing. You are going to add plans based on if this is there or if this is not there. Uh, so I just draw your attention to that. On the southerly side of the site. Um, they're not providing any buffer at all. Um, they, they do have a drainage swale in there, there's a few plants located close to Recovery Road. But there's no plants along that whole side, and I'm drawing your attention to that. That in our opinion, I'm not sure that that would meet the intent of the bylaw. And if they're going to revise the plan, uh, to ultimately have it stamped for the next meeting. I think the board needs to give them some guidance that you would want that landscape, uh, that landscape added along the buffer. And then lastly, the land, the, the zoning bylaw is very specific in the amount of trees that need to be planted. Based on the linear footage of buffer that you have on site. Um, based on the linear footage that they have. Uh, they would need thirteen trees, thirteen shade trees to be provided. At present, they do have thirteen shade trees on the plan. But two of them are located within interior islands to meet the parking lot shade tree requirement. And there's no distinction that they can do double duty, they can, they can count for both. So our recommendation is they may need to add two more trees to be compliant with the zoning bylaw. Uh, and would ask through the board for the applicant to take a look at that. Um, but I think if the landscape buffers can be enhanced. Um, I, I think you'd be in a good position for approvability of the plan, so. That was it, everything else that he, he had indicated between the first response and the second. Um, has generally been resolved, obviously the biggest one we wanted to talk about tonight. Was the definition of the storage, which the board has satisfied. Uh, so I think if we can tackle those last three. We'll be in a good place.
Okay, with you?
Yeah, I understand your whole issue on the buffer, I've been exposed to a couple of those in the past and. Understand your position clearly, thank you.
All right, uh, discussion, uh, Mr. Farady, before I open it to the board. Uh, board. Jane, I don't wanna leave you out. Go for it.
Um. Yeah, I, I think that the, the landscaping could stand some more um, attention. In terms of the buffer, um. And maybe some better enumeration of what the existing. Vegetation is, that we know. Whether, whether and how it needs to be augmented at the backside of the site buffer. Um, so I'm in agreement with that, uh, the curbing, I think. We're always trying to ramp up how the town looks and I think that this is gonna actually be a pretty good-looking sight and, and I think that doing. Granite curbing at the entry, we've run into that before on projects and had to. My sitting on your side of the table, Bill, um, having to put in granite curbing at the entrances, um. And I think it, it does end up holding up. Better than. Anything else, um. So I think that that's worth consideration, and then obviously the mounting calculations need to be reviewed. Um, based on Phil's commentary, so. Um, yeah, I do think that the, the elevations of the building look better, so thank you for that.
Any other board members?
I agree with Jane, there's the point of that.
From my thunder on the curve. Everybody tries to avoid. And uh, you know, you put the granite and it stays for a long time. The platoon is, uh, if they put concrete. Or whatever, you know, first thing they do is they hit it off Cape Cod berm. or whatever, you know, first thing they do is they hit it off Cape Cod brown.
Come on, I mean.
Just rips it right out.
Cape Cod brown, it becomes like the the sunstones, you know.
It crumbles and who's who's gonna fix it?
Yeah, yeah.
Even precast concrete vertical curbing just doesn't hold up with a snowplow.
Other other board comment?
I agree with all of Jane's comments.
Comments from the citizenry? Any citizen wishing to speak?
Okay, you're running down all right now.
So, uh. So I think we've enumerated the items that need to be addressed. Uh, I think it's going to be a good application. I think we, my opinion is is that we're moving toward. Do you want to say something?
When you're done, I want to do crowbar one thing in.
Crow crowbar away.
Uh, I, so when I was just running down my list, I forgot to mention one thing. Um, I, if I may, relative to the parking, um, based on the number of parking spaces that are noted to be required. Uh, and Bill mentioned this during his introduction and summary. It says the twenty one spaces are to be provided based on the current usage and nineteen are shown on the plans. I was just going to, before the hearing continues presumably. Uh, the applicant may need some direction from the board as to whether or not you're willing to consider that relief on parking for those two spaces. You are allowed under the bylaw fifteen percent if you consider it shared parking within the buildings.
Fifteen percent of twenty is two.
Two, which is what they would need. Uh, so I just didn't want them to leave and revise everything and then we come back and the parking is unresolved. That's all.
I I personally, I would be given what we think the use of the site is. Now, we don't know what the use in the other building is going to be, and we could be creating a problem for ourselves, but.
I I've been there as a patient. There's always, always empty spaces.
Across the street.
Yeah. There's always spaces.
But you can't, you can't ask your people to park most of the street in somebody else's lot without.
But I agree.
Well, it's tough to. It's it's tough to to say that you're gonna co-op spaces with a building that doesn't exist if they're talking about the building, a building that this applicant is gonna build on an adjacent site. Um, that's a little difficult when we don't know the use of the potential building. Um.
Yes, I think Sam was talking about the South Coast property.
Yeah, which would be would mean an agreement that stayed in place with another property owner.
Okay, great. And my my opinion is not knowing your other applicant, but given what you've proposed so far, I don't think the variance or excuse me, the fifteen percent. I would be open to that consideration.
That's a that's a waiver. What what would we do? We can considering the shared parking being, we have two separate entities on the site and we can share
Yeah.
the parking space together and that can be reduced by fifteen percent.
I think that's.
Those two spaces.
That's what I was saying.
Okay. That's what we thought.
That that that's correct. I wasn't indicating shared parking with anything outside of the boundary of this lot. They have two buildings with different uses specified between the light industrial and the office. The shared parking is between each of them, and that's where you would grant the relief.
Right.
Okay, agreed.
But they're gonna, they're gonna be operating during similar hours though, so. That gets complicated, doesn't it? I could go, I could go way out on a limb here with a suggestion.
Climb out there.
Well, the proportions of building two are left to right on the draw drawing, left to right, um, is longer than uh top to bottom. So you could adjust those proportion. I don't know how far along you are with the building design, but you could adjust those proportions. It looks like there's there's room at the backside of the building or the up upper part of the page. Um, and you could push the front wall of that back enough to fit in two more spaces. So there I go, out on way out on a limb here.
When we add.
I don't know how far along you are with the design of the buildings.
More storm water required and it complicates matters a little bit, a little bit more. Um, we'd prefer to see, well, we'd we'd like to request that waiver of fifteen percent.
Okay, we we've got that for us and some of the board members have said they're open to that.
Yeah.
We'll see how that goes.
So is is there any difference in the operating hours of the two businesses? That would make that fifteen percent m- make some sense?
I think the thing to keep in mind with regard to the the primary tenant is their their utilization, there's hardly anyone there most of the time.
You'd mentioned it.
Okay, so most of the day that they would come in in the morning maybe and collect stuff and head out to a job site.
Correct. So yes, so for in terms of the the office staff, I think, did we say three to five people?
Yes.
That's a five being on the upper end and then other people that are in the business, it's going to be early morning, like six to eight. I mean, usually job sites are starting at seven.
Right.
Right, right.
And like, you know, after four to five, after.
Office people, office people might start a little bit later than the tradespeople.
Correct. And office would be your typical eight eight to five range.
Um, yeah.
And there's no street parking on Recovery Road, right? So that.
Not with granite curbing.
No, and it would just to add one one other point that we made at the first time around, the the labor that's associated with the install of the acoustical tile ceilings, they're not gonna meet at this facility each day and then commute as a group up to another, you know, they'll be, they'll be um required to be at the job site. So we think we'll have sufficient spaces.
Okay.
That all sounds pretty logical.
Yeah, right. I think we've enumerated a path forward. There's no comment from the community. Uh, no additional comment from the board or professional staff. So I guess we'll be looking for a continuance until when you think they'll have. We don't know when the fire department will get back to us, but hopefully sooner rather than later. Uh, just the question to you, Mr. Parity, is I know there was some change at the fire department. Is this a procedural issue that you think that's gonna get better, or is this what we should be planning going forward?
I think this is a short term issue that they're having. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if it gets better immediately.
Okay, so this is not a new standard that we should be thinking in terms of our schedule?
No, I don't think so. I think there was some turnover at the fire department. They uh started having someone else review the applications.
And they're getting up the speed.
Yeah, that gentleman went on vacation for a few weeks, so it works, we're kind of all settled down.
Okay, good. So that's okay with you then. So when when do we want to continue? To the six? Not the six. What was the?
Twenty second?
Twentieth.
No, the tw- the twentieth is.
I think the twentieth is pretty well full.
It's the next.
November tenth, yeah. Is that put you in a crunch or?
If there, I believe, if if there's any, so potentially.
Um, we, but the way we're going, everything could be done on the on the.
Of November.
Right, I mean, barring any, any. I think we kind of emotionally reached agreement. And so you need the the order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. You need the letter from the fire department. Those are the things that are outside our control here. Um. But I think.
When, Bill, when is your um meeting with conservation?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth. Yeah, I I think moving it into November makes more sense. If if that's on the fifteenth. Uh, the Conservation Commission has twenty one days to issue their actual order of conditions. So it it could be likely that they don't even have it by the twentieth anyway. I think moving into November makes the most sense.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to continue. Wait, I gotta read it. Um. Ten twenty five, Plan twenty five to ten, Concert Group Inc., Site Plan Review, Six Recovery Roads. Until this one would be the regularly scheduled planning board meeting of November tenth, right? So. Uh, and that will be back in.
Don't move.
Uh, motion by Sam Corbett.
Second.
Second by Mike Mike Baptista. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Jane Gleason, aye.
Mike Baptista.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz, both aye. And uh, like I commented on the last application, given that I think we're moving forward. In in a positive direction, I think we could begin thinking about conditions of approval.
Thanks.
And open, open invitation to your team to submit your suggestions uh for conditions of approval, and we have input from the professional staff and the standard uh, conditions that the board would normally apply. Uh, I think we could begin getting that moving so that we don't add that additional time at the back end of the of the process.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay, so and the we've we've, this will be continued then. Oh, we gotta take a vote, right? Um. Or did we do the, we did it a vote, we did a vote, so continue to November. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks for your history. For your time. Appreciate it very much.
Hey. Uh, is Mr. Lockwood out there?
We'll grab him for you. You all have a nice night.
Thank you.
Sign, you gotta take this. I've got the measurements. You will have a sign. Maybe even for Thursday.
Oh, wow.
Let's split it with you.
Oh, wow.
I'm making it, so there's no cost. What color do you want? I could do magenta. I don't have, I, oh no, I actually do have pink. I have pink, Phil.
Next time you can shut it off.
You want pink?
No.
No, I actually can do it pink if you want.
No.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, um.
Thanks for your patience.
So, um, we're gonna open, not open, continue the public hearing eleven twenty five. Uh, Plan twenty five eleven Scribbles Learning Center LLC Site Plan Review, three ninety six Onset Avenue. Uh, the applicant, introduce introduce yourself. Uh, and Mr. Lockwood, I think you're the professional. I would like to hear the uh, you're not, or so if you would just swear in and tell the whole truth.
I swear to swear.
Uh, just and spell your name. So from Patty, just spell Lockwood. She's.
Oh, where is she?
She's listening. She's listening.
She's listening. L O C K N B O O D.
Okay, and then the two of you, if you introduce yourself and spell your name.
Uh, Mark Cordera, uh, M A R C, uh, C O R D E I R A.
And Melissa Cordera, M E L I F S A.
Saying you're both from Scribbles.
Yes.
Yes.
Speak to us and then Phil, I didn't swear you in, but could you just?
Oh, sure. Whatever you like, go ahead.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth for all the applications that we.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so if you want to bring us up to date and then we'll have a discussion.
All right, good. Um, we received the letter from um um, Alan, major last, middle of last week, so we're pressed to um make a response, um, and apologize to not get it.
Well, you can, if you want to just comment generally on the letter.
Well, we we have a letter addressing the issues.
Oh, okay, good. You can.
With behalf of that's that out too, so you have a chance to get it up online.
Okay, great.
That's it.
Okay, and Phil, did you get that yet or this will be?
No, he is not. Thank God I have enough couples for everybody.
Um, additional is the most important, so. Additionally, we have drawings, the copies of drawings we produce. So for the record, Patty, we're looking at a letter dated October sixth, twenty twenty five. Uh, Reese Scribbles Learning Center, um, from Lockwood Architects. And further, he's handing it out.
Are you gonna be presenting?
Phil, what are the date on those plans? So just for the record. Just read them for the record.
October sixth, two thousand twenty five.
And these are architectural plans? Is that what they're?
Um, there was one, two plans, one, those added um, parking dimensions to a surveyor's plan.
Great.
And then the other is a plant or a planting plan, uh, that was my my stamp.
Patty, just show those of, we're handing them out.
Thank you.
Thank Patty, your designated drawing number LC one. Please, um, then you could comment and then of course we'll we'll wait for, Phil won't respond to your letter, but you can just summarize.
Yeah, well, obviously you're. Okay, so, um, we tried to address um, Bill's comments on pretty much on a blow by blow basis. Um, Article seven being the design standards and guidelines. Um, we've uh gone through each chapter and verse of those. Um, to wit, um, for, we're try, we're trying to avoid making as any as few changes on the site as possible since it's a fully developed site.
Um, were there any particular, as you go through, were there any particular comments that he had that you're taking exception to or you're trying?
Well, there are a couple.
Okay, so highlight those as you go through.
Okay. Um.
You don't have to jump to them, but highlight them as you go.
Where we, um, is, let's see. We go through the first one, the design standards, um. But may I just read, read, you can, you can read along with me here. Um. Section seven sixty, uh, seven sixty two one, seven sixty two two, seven sixty two three, address shared curb cuts. That, uh, which is um a worthy goal, but irrelevant to the st- the site since it's a standalone site. It doesn't attach to any other commercial sites. Um, seven oh six, seven sixty two four discourages double loading parking areas. Uh, none of the parking areas in the site are double loaded. They're all si- single loaded. Uh, seven sixty two five addresses loading service and dumpster areas. We did not have a dumpster area designated on the um, previous plan. We have shown one on our site landscape and site lighting plan, actually both. Um, and where we will put trash cans. We don't anticipate a large trash volume, so a dump. We're not anticipating having a dumpster on site with.
Right, finishing that.
We're we're using the roll off uh containers with uh rolling, rolling barrels and will be a fenced fenced location.
To that point, to the app, are you expecting a diaper load?
Yeah.
So how this volume, what what's being proposed with roll offs, you're gonna have enough for the diapers and the sanitation? It'll be sanitary for the diapers.
Absolutely.
You're satisfied that 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 it will, I don't know what the. Okay, Phil, just think about that. I don't know if there's any, you don't have to respond today, but I don't know if there's anything special for a load.
Are you gonna be using, you're gonna be using paper product?
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about cloth diapers. I'm assuming.
No.
The closables.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, does anybody use cloth diapers?
They do. Not me, though. I never.
Okay, so that's a question that we'll want a comment on sanitary consideration.
Sure, I think Mr. Chairman, uh, maybe the biggest thing while there's not a regulatory requirement is maybe the good neighbor principle. Is, you know, make sure diapers which may have an odor are stored in the proper container and contained and, you know. You have a couple of residential houses.
Yeah, at least, can I just?
No, no, you don't have to respond now. I'm, we're, that was, I think, comment, because Mr. Lockwood is reviewing his response and Phil hasn't looked at it, but that would be my input view.
Okay.
Not having a dumpster. Have we, have we adequately addressed sanitary?
Yeah, I think, I think. Yeah, I think I think an somewhat answer to that. I think the small, smaller containers emptied more often would be. Preferable to large containers of offer empty. Less frequent. Um, let's see, seven sixty two, six and seven sixty two, seven, speak to internal streets. I think that's primarily for subdivisions. We don't have any of those. Internal streets, seven sixty three point one. Uh, requires thirty percent of the site to be previous, uh, pervious landscaping. Right now, the the figure is about twenty seven percent. We'd be looking for an exemption on that from the board. And then there. There's a later item which. And number nine, number nine and Phil's. List. Is similar in nature. And we likewise be looking for an exemption on that. Uh, one. Suggest that we remove a thousand square feet of pavement. The other would suggest that we remove three thousand square feet of pavement. Don't see anything useful or beneficial about that. Create extra cost, create erosion, potential erosion. To minimal benefit. Seven sixty three point two addresses useful landscaping versus detention facilities, but. In this case, all the landscaping we have would should meet that definition of useful. Seven sixty three, three requires one tree per ten cars internal to the parking area. We have three trees of of some maturity in the in the midst of the park parking area, which would. Should satisfy that requirement. Uh, seven sixty three, four, five require fifteen foot landscape tree planted buffer along the street frontage. As you can see from the plan. There we don't have fifteen feet. In fact, we, in some cases, we don't have any feet of buffer. And certainly no room to plant trees. Uh, along the the Onset Avenue and the Great Neck roadside. Uh, in the, at the intersection, the buffer widens widens up, but. Um, that's a busy intersection where. I don't think we want to be planting. Vegetation that will impair people's. Vision while driving through that intersection and. Also, we don't know what that intersection will look like in 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 the future. As right now, only the two end spaces, one on Great Neck Road and one over Onset Avenue. Actually have parking that is happening within that fifteen foot setback. Although we do that traffic aisles. Seven sixty three, six and seven require landscape buffer to residential use. Yes, there is a. To the south, there is a. A residence, it's. Buffer at that point is about eight feet, but densely planted, uh, both existing and. Uh, not all existing, okay. Um, and there's a fence at the top. There's a good, there's a brief complete tree line along the fence line. Um, so if you had the opportunity to go out to the site, you'll see that it's difficult to determine that there is in fact a. House there at all. And it is also separated by elevation, uh, being sitting. Eight to ten feet above the parking, our parking lot. Okay, and then we get into some building, uh, move on from the site to the building itself. Okay, seven sixty. Four point one encourages buried roof forms, the roof, um, so we have. Five gables, six roof planes. I think there's enough. Activity on the. Um, in the form of the building. And the next several address demonstration of the sod. Um, it's double hung windows. In this case, there is no need for merchandising. Um, so storefront windows are not a necessity. We come in at around twenty percent of. The facade, the front facade is as glazed area versus the thirty percent. Suggested siding is great lapboards, very New England and should be compliant with that requirement. Um, seven sixty four, four speaks to facade. Articulation, um, it was. Beyond a rectangle. Rectangle that have four sides, there are at least, there are ten faces to this building. Some of them small. Uh, the longest one is sixty five feet, which is well under the hundred foot. Ascribed. Sixty four, five requires, uh, speaks to a multi-story building, which we are not. Sixty four, six, um, suggests that the entry ought to be on the front, which it is. Sixty sixty five, one. Roof drainage, uh, and right now, uh, downspouts discharge onto the. Landscape areas in some cases, the pavement. Sixty five, two, um, seven sixty five, two suggests extra parking spaces. Be discouraged. We have. We currently have. Uh, twenty five spaces that were eighteen might be required. And. We. We hesitate to remove any. And would be looking for an exemption on that. Um, you encourage the use of public transportation. And Gaff Gafford does, uh, go by. Uh, and is available for flag down if anybody. Any kids want to leave school. Realable energy is encouraged, recycling, recycle materials are encouraged. The building is forty years old. Recycling the same materials that I've been there. Stay in there. And when. H V I C systems. Reach the end of their life, usable life, they'll probably be replaced with more.
More efficient.
More efficient units. Seven sixty five, six. Discourages detention basins. We don't have any. Right now we have four. Or catch basins. Okay, parking, um, the one of the two plans in front of you there is parking layout plan. We've done site measurements of, uh, as built measurements of of the actual parking spaces out there. And we are deficient in several respects. Uh, to wit, I think only the two, only two spaces on the Onset Avenue side are nine feet. Nine point something feet instead of nine and a half feet wide. But, uh, many communities actually allow a nine foot space. The. Combined aisle with the, uh, depth, aisle and parking depth of forty two feet. Is deficient in a few locations. But in all of those locations, there, we're, it's single loaded parking, so. If the primary purpose of that distance is to avoid backing into each other. Um, which, when there's only one people. Are in motion there, you're not going to be doing that. Okay, uh, ten's landscape architect requirement. Um, and ten thirty. Ten thirty one suggests if that doesn't kick in until. Five thousand square feet of space. Um, we've happy to provide the the plan. We don't necessarily feel the need to provide a landscape architect. And for your excellent suggestion, Mr. Schultz, we, um, are showing the addition of fourteen. Private hedge plants to create a a slowdown barrier for for any.
Escaped children.
Escaped children, yeah, I hesitate to use that term myself, but I'm glad you did. And again, um, from the ten forty, part landscape buffer similarly as previously discussed. Uh, lighting is shown on all landscaping site lighting plan. Um, to wit, we have. Utility mounted lamps on one, two, three, three locations. Which are identified on the plan. Um, we also have. Uh, four building mounted wall lamps. Two by the front door and one on each end of the building, as well as some under canopy lights in the back side of the doors. All of those are existing. Um, now drainage. Stormwater management assessment. Um, are ruined. Of twelve sixty two point one suggests that. Uh, a one acre lot is required to trigger that requirement. Um, this lot is thirty nine thousand square feet, so it's. Somewhat less than the acre. So. Exemption on that. Uh, let's see, there was a comment about flood zone designation, um, which yes, was a scriptur's error and. On on this survey plan be corrected when we. Submit a final one. Emergency vehicle of fire department, we've heard. From the other room, also from the other room, a lot of discussion about fire department. And they're perfectly welcome to come over and drive the site rather than deal with them, than deal with the plan.
Well, isn't that, uh, is that where he was at Onset?
This is where. Right on the line. And finally, um, we have. Appeared before conservation on October first and received a negative determination on our request for determination of. Um, so that's basically my spiel for the night. Yeah, we'll input guidances to what you might be inclined to. Dispensation and so on.
So, um. Another professional staff has briefly heard your explanation and cursory review. Any comment other? We'll give you time to. Go back and cogitate, but any any immediate response to the applicant?
Um, so no, no immediate response. I, you know, I would take the time to just review it and, um, you know. Think about what what the applicant has provided back. What I mentioned to the board is I guess sort of this statement of assertion. Um, you know, we provided a number of comments that we asked the applicant to respond to in terms of. With these these various design standards. Uh, we just wanted to make sure everybody knows, we know it's a redevelopment project. But we do apply the town's standards to any projects. That are coming before the boards and in this particular case, it's actually a change of use based project. Um, and it's an opportunity for the town to review sites in particular to see where they may be deficient. And create opportunities to uplift the town, um, in total and not necessarily to single out a particular applicant. Or come across as overbearing towards what we're asking to do. Um, so in certain cases, you know, the board will ultimately have to. Provide an opinion as to whether or not there is sufficient landscaping on site because at present insufficient landscaping exists. In compliance with the bylaw, the same is also true of, uh, impervious cover. Um, the same is also true with general dimensional requirements for parking spaces and circulation. Um, and whether or not the the benefits of improving those conditions. Um, outweigh keeping them in place. Uh, so I think a lot of my commentary to Mr. Lockwood's. Uh, response letter will be sort of relegated in that world as to whether or not there are material benefits that would be. That would be as a result of making the changes in the notes that we we have.
Thank you. And and input on those comments from the planning office would be welcome as well, not. Clearly, as as the Dero saying, it's an opportunity to improve the site. Um, so comments from the planning office in terms of directionality would be welcome. From the board, uh, Jane.
Um, I I do want to make one, uh, one quick comment and that is, I was following along. I don't have the benefit of the of. Mr. Lockwood's letter in front of me, um, but I have, I have the current. I have the current zoning bylaw on my screen and I have the old, the October. Twenty, uh, April twenty four, twenty twenty three, one on my desk and paper copy and it looks like. You might have been working out of the April. Um, zoning bylaws with regard to article seven. Um, all those items in seven sixty. Um, they're. Numbering has changed with the current bylaw, so.
Latest off the website. I couldn't get it today.
That's the one I was. Commenting on before as well.
This letter to you, you should have that in your email.
Okay, yeah, I don't have enough screen on my laptop for all of that to be open, but anyway.
It's up there somewhere. I did ultimately find this one. It's on the website somewhere.
Yeah, it is on the website. Um, so it was just, I think it was just article seven, but the numbers changed. Uh, it's, it appears that the other articles were in alignment, so. Other than that, I'd like to. Digest all of this a little more, so look at your drawings and your letter and.
Good.
Come from there.
Mike.
I had a bit of the same reaction as Phil, which is. We are excited about this project. I want to make sure you understand that. Um, it's an old building, um, I try by it every day. But. There are some changes to the bylaw that, um. I think would be of, it would be important to look at lighting. If you were sitting here early, you heard about the fire department letters and. Yeah, it's it's a bugaboo. It's become a real bugaboo for us. So I would urge you. To look at things like lighting, revisit landscape a bit, um. And and top of the fire department. And think about how you can work within the current bylaws because. We feel like much of what is what we have, we all spend a lot of time and effort revising. That's still an ongoing process, but. It does improve the building, the neighborhood, the use, uh, it's a different use. So I would just ask you to. Consider what Phil Phil's general statement and to revisit in that within that light, if you would. So, but again, uh, we're happy to see someone who's wants to. Create new activity and life and all that in that building.
Lighting seems to be insufficient, in my opinion. You have a full light here, full light here, flood here. Nothing in the center of the parking lot or the building or any play areas. What is the proposed shed right here? Um, for the people, tricycles, um, that goes, that sort of thing. How are you gonna get there? Um, from the play yard. So you're taking things to the play yard to the shed? Yeah. Where is your plan for drop off? They will be parking in the probably two, two parking areas in the front. But if they're dropping a child off, what's the the pattern you're you?
Yeah, what's the?
Traffic flow, I think. Is that what you're asking? It's a two way flow. And, um, they would be, they would be parking, walking their child to the to the door. No drop off at all. Those are all barely.
No drop off at all, these are all barely.
They're too young.
Yes, you know.
They have to check in on an iPad that I have physically.
So they park and bring your child in, there's nothing drop off at all?
No, absolutely not. Yeah, no.
I got my main concern with this here is the lighting. You see, it just seems you have three here, one here, and the entire parking area in the middle has no coverage at all.
Okay, would not, not disagree, that's, we're here to.
Make sure the fire department happy, said.
It was a change to be night sky compliant, whatever design, what's that? Night sky compliant. Or dark sky.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll soon be aware of how, how early it gets dark, too.
Yep.
In the, in the summer, it's, you know, it's really nice, we've got all this light and don't have to deal with that, but as the winter lands, we'll, we'll see.
How late will the kids be leaving? It'll be dark in.
Five thirty six, yeah.
It'll be dark, it'll be dark.
It will be dark.
So who determines lighting? Who do we talk to? Like, do we talk to the fire department? Do we talk about lighting specialists?
Lighting.
You start with Mr. Lockwood, but a lighting engineer or?
And there's requirements in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, there are design.
Yeah, their foot, their foot candle light level minimums that the, the bylaw stipulates. And you can do a photometric plan that shows the light levels across the site.
Okay, and, uh, my only comment on top of it is, uh. We would require a letter from the fire department, they, they're gonna have to do a swep analysis, so.
One small thing is, there's a little shed, it says proposed crash enclosure.
That's where the, we were talking about the.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, behind, yeah, behind the shed.
That, 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 we're trying to determine the sanitary, that we were talking about earlier. So.
Can I piggyback on that? Um, so those diapers will be an individually con- bags, like sealed bags placed for that, just so you know that. And then also your recommendation about the shrubbery, that's gonna be installed on Wednesday, if that, is that good to go, or? Like, can I just do that? I mean, I have already bought them, or paid for them, he's ready to put them in on Wednesday due to your recommendation, so I just want to make sure it's a go.
There's no go until we take a vote, but.
It's up to you.
It's up to you.
Okay.
Thank you, that's awesome.
I just want to make sure that.
I, I don't think.
It's okay to do without, like, we've talked about it, but I just want to make sure I get that.
Actually, your work is between you and the building department right now, right? I don't, can they plant shrubs without a building permit?
Yeah, that'd be fine, yeah, especially where I think the alternative is they don't get planted and die.
Yes.
That's the planning Wednesday, he said he's gonna do a Wednesday based on, it's a perfect time to plant, but I want to make sure with you that I'm not doing something I shouldn't be doing either, so.
All I want to be on the record is until we actually have an approved site plan, this is all.
Yeah, don't do anything else.
Discussion, yeah, yeah.
Do you notice? We'd be happy to let you do that tonight if you are, are amenable.
Yeah, I just, I'm the money guy here, I guess, there is some.
Wait a minute, it's a year, man, it's a whole month.
There's some serious urgency on our side, because we've been paying rent for five months now.
We've got, we've, we've got to get through, we've got to hit all the check marks, so everybody's in a hurry.
Yep.
No, we understand, it's my retirement, that's all, is my, everything I have is into this project right now, every penny. So.
Uh, any other board comment, discussion, citizens comment? Hearing none, uh, we're gonna need to continue this, um, probably. Jane, have you been keeping track? The tent is getting busier, but I think we still have.
I think the tenth would probably be okay.
Alright, so that would give you between now and the tenth, time to.
You know, you're gonna put together a letter to Phil in response.
I think I did.
Yeah.
Okay. He's gonna respond to that, my letter, and I will respond to that letter, yeah.
Right, exactly, that's what I have.
Yeah, your work, your work was back and forth, and that we need the lighting plan, we need the fire department. We got the letter of no, no determinations from Tom Tom.
You're ahead of others getting that letter.
So the fire department, is that something that, I mean, it seems to be a delay, do I reach out to the fire department? Because I've already told them several times, so.
You need to just, they, they would.
Probably talk to them about interior processes.
Oh, exterior, exterior too.
Exterior too.
We've had some checks.
Then I think the request of the fire department should come pretty quickly, we've already done this.
Did you ask them to respond to the plan?
They actually haven't gotten any correspondence from anybody, as far as I know.
Actually, the plans do reflect one commentary from, from them where we, they've asked us to replace the wood chips with, uh, non, non-wellable.
Sure, yeah.
And that's.
But we, we just need a, a letter from the chief.
So, alright.
Josh, how did they go about that? Normally that happens.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll remind the chief that we need a, a letter, yeah.
I'll remind him as well.
Yeah, normally, you don't have to do anything, we, we're part of the process.
To move it along.
But I know you want to move it along, yeah.
You don't want to not have that and get to the, ready to go, and we still don't, as you've heard.
So the letter from the chief for specific.
Swep.
They're gonna tell you.
Probably the chief will need the swept path analysis drawing. I don't know what the chief, it seems that that's what he likes to review, is a swept path drawing.
Yep.
We will.
You may want to be involved in that contact.
Yeah, and, and he may say that he doesn't, you know, that's between, his, that's his requirements, where they are.
Yeah, he may, he may have driven.
Just that they put driving around, they drive through the, drive through the building and.
As long as he comes back and says, we don't have any concerns, all's good, we're okay.
You can suggest that.
Yeah, he may have driven around it already for, before you were involved.
An actual site as opposed to, I mean, mythical site on tape.
Yeah, right, and he may have driven around it already, so.
Yeah.
So I, uh, just trying to summarize for you guys, we need to take the motion, you can vote, right?
Vote, need a date.
The sixth, or tenth, I'm sorry.
Tenth, eleven ten.
Eleven ten, so a motion to continue, uh, eleven twenty five, Plan Twenty Five Dash Eleven, Scribbles Learning Center LLC Site Plan Review. Three ninety six Onset Avenue till the legally scheduled planning board meeting of November tenth, twenty twenty five. Moved by Sam Corbett.
Second.
Second by Julie Moran, roll call vote please.
Jane Gleason, I.
That's his time.
Julie Moran, I.
Sam Corbett, I.
And Carl Schultz votes I, so, good, we're moving forward, maybe not as fast as you'd like, but we are, we're moving at pace. Thank you all.
I'll take back as many plans as you don't want, okay? I can recycle as well as we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your letter.
Because we have little copies on board, I'm going.
Okay, yeah.
If you want it. Yeah, I have not submitted them digitally, but I will do that.
Then that's.
Okay. We'll do submit them.
I still have stacks of plans from you in my closet, so.
Yeah, I. I, uh, during my last move, I got rid of, I believe, three truckloads of plans.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, um, moving forward, continued public hearings, proposed zoning article for fall town meeting. Uh, item six on the agenda, zoning amendments, contracted to. Josh.
You're a part of each name. I believe we are all familiar, uh, with the three that I'm presenting again tonight, we had discussions about them. Uh, I think what I'll try to do this evening is really cut back my presentation, understanding that I only get five minutes at town meeting. So, uh, kind of trying to work through the kinks of what that entails. So let me see here. I will. I'll share my screen so Jane can be involved as well. Not turned off. Excuse me, I need to allow this computer to share to that computer.
I said there's no one left.
Is there anyone online?
Anyone?
One person, okay, I believe. Nope.
No.
Nope.
Not a soul?
There's one person left, and, uh.
We're gonna go with it.
She's married to Sam.
Oh. So.
You're in picture, say, go home.
Work, Sarah.
Oh, shit. Believe this allows me to share.
Well, we gotta do the demo anyway, because it's gonna be recorded, and people will go, wow.
Well, I have, I presented then Tom, I'm presenting it again to you guys, I will be presenting for the Slack forum tomorrow.
We have to vote.
You have to vote, right.
Are, are you looking for a vote tonight?
Yes, if you're so inclined to, if not, I'm gonna bring it back on the twentieth.
Right, go for it, and then.
Gotcha.
I guess on the twentieth, I'll force you to vote, if you like it or not. And I'll take the vote as it comes.
This, this chair, before Josh gets into it, do you need me for anything, or I'll step away while.
Unless you want to comment, uh, you always welcome your comment.
I will, uh, I will defer to the board.
Okay. Phil, before you leave, I have one question for you.
Yes.
Um, have you done a final walkthrough of grace, uh, the church?
Uh, we did it this morning.
Okay, yes. Good, otherwise, you think, okay.
Mostly good.
Okay, that just, I gotta, I'm gonna follow with the board on a later topic about that, so, uh, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, uh, presenting tonight, I will be talking about Article eighteen of the warrant for the Fall Town Meeting. Which is the contractor base, um, I've presented it to the planning board once already, so hopefully we can, uh, move through this pretty quickly. Um. Again, we talked about the, um. The language and the definitions of what we expect a contractor be bay to be, and what we expect a contractor yard to be. Uh, these play into what the contractor bay building actually looks like, and then the contractor yard kind of. Ties up some exterior storage, if the board is so inclined to allow it.
Can I add something really quick?
Yep.
Just to eliminate a little bit of confusion, you might, might want to add in parentheses before these article numbers, be like before Article sixteen says. Put in parentheses, uh, zoning. So that it's not confused with the town meeting article number, which is eighteen.
Um. Okay. I, for my presentations, they are all referencing the, um, they are all referencing, no, they are all referencing the warrant article.
But add the following language to Article sixteen, the Article eighteen is, isn't that the town meeting article?
That's correct.
The Article sixteen.
But Article sixteen is the zoning bylaws.
Thank you, I see, I see what you're saying now, thank you.
On this page.
Yep. Thank you, that is a, uh, helpful comment. Um, okay, so we have the definitions of what a contractor bay or contractor yard is. Um. Here I've identified the purpose of why we're bringing this forward and, and wanted part of the zoning bylaw. The applicability of how it relates to, uh, the contractor bay use itself. Um. Abuse limitations, uh, we, I, I think the town has identified that. You know, fabrication of things, processing of things would be more of a manufacturing use instead of contractor bay, so we exclude it from this. Uh, we also exclude hazardous materials being stored there, um. And we also go out of our way to, um, limit the use of. Uh, mechanic related services, uh, that's actually, uh, limited in the definition. Um. And the reason for that is we don't, we don't expect you to see an application where they put in. Uh, the required controls for vehicle servicing, and then, you know, they start to rent out this facility and think it's an allowed use. So, well, we're expressively, uh, not allowing it or limiting it. Um, outdoor storage, we think is something that these type of facilities would, would like or require. Uh, so what we've really built in here is that, um, if you are going to allow storage, we've put a size limitation on it. But we've also, um, required screening of it, so you can't see it from the street.
And importantly, you note a fence and planting, right, there's a key word and.
Right. So, um, you know, that, that's really aesthetics of the property, um, it's likely that.
The presumption would be the planting would be on the outside of the fence, is that correct?
Correct.
Does that need to be clear? Or, or you don't think that'll be an issue for anybody?
I, I don't see that being an issue, remember these, these uses will come before you under a site plan review anyway?
Yes.
So I think when you see a plan and you see planting to decide the fence, I think it's, it's, it'll be an easy call out to say, uh, those are required outside.
Okay, now, interesting, you just said site plan review, but at the top, it says special permit.
Um, yep, so the, well, it, it will be both, right, we're allowing this under a special permit. But likely these usage are, are gonna require ten or more parking spaces, which would trigger the site plan review.
Or do you want to just do a site plan review? See, I think we can use site plan review. More than we have in the past.
Okay.
But do you think we should only trigger a site plan review of these if? It gets triggered by parking, or do you think having a site plan review? It gives us some ability to provide input.
I think there are probably very little projects that you're not seeing under site plan review. I think the ten space requirement, because it's not an additional ten spaces, it's if the use requires ten spaces.
Spaces, right.
So I, I think that a lot of the uses that you're seeing end up in site plan review regardless.
Okay, because I, because we were talking even back on the solar projects, even where as of right. Uh, I'm only speaking more broadly, there's as of right solar, but I think we could add site plan review. Even for some as of right solar projects, or other, or other as of right projects.
For sure, and that, you know, if we wanted to address those projects, maybe there's a, uh, suitable way to get them under site plan review. And maybe the trigger isn't parking.
Right, that's what, that's, that's why I was.
Yep.
Other triggers, yeah.
I, I.
We're not, not, I, I was just discussing.
Sure, yep, and I think this one will always be triggered just because of the, the parking requirement that we actually require in the contractor bay bylaw. Uh, so again, like, um, I've put in some things like hours of operation, um, you know. Give the ZBA a little, uh, ability to waiver on that, um, but. Uh, hours of operation are also something that you could define in site plan review as well. So I kind of went what I figured were acceptable timeframes, um, especially. If these are located in the zoning districts that we intend for them to be located in.
Joining to a residential area.
But if it's a budding of residents, maybe, maybe under site plan review, you consider, uh, changing the hours of operation. Um. So stormwater, again, that's gonna be reviewed by Phil, uh, I don't see any issue there, um. Facade, I imagine, will probably fall in under the industrial use definition of the bylaw, um. So, and then, um. I did something different than a few of the other areas of the zoning bylaw where I actually gave you guys. The express ability to grant waivers. Um, and how I, how I said that was, you know, if the compliance is impractical, impracticable, gee. Uh, but the intent is met, you could grant the waiver to some of the requirements. Um, I think it's just in, something that maybe you haven't seen and makes sense.
Yeah, in the, in the past, we've been constrained by our inability to grant waivers.
Right, so I, I think adding this makes sense, and if you never grant the waiver, then that's fine, but now at least you have the ability to. Um. And then I identify the changes to the use table that would be, uh, so again, we allow it in. Our commercial, um, our industrial, and our institutional, uh, zoning districts under, um. Special permit by the planning board. and our institutional, uh, zoning districts under, um, special permit by the planning board. Um. And then I sat down with the building commissioner to talk about, you know, what the impact of the use actually looks like when you're looking at parking. Um, one space per a thousand square feet of storage area seemed to make sense, um, we do one space per twenty or two hundred fifty square feet of office area, um, and then we put in that if one of these buildings is less than, you know, if it doesn't trigger that, then it needs to require a minimum of three spaces, um. And if the use requires a company vehicle be stored on site, we require a space for that. Um. So after talking with the building commissioner about those kinda concerns, somewhere between three and four spaces per bay seems to make some sense. Um, the thought process and what we've historically seen in these buildings is, someone will rent a bay, uh, maybe they'll store a bill, uh, vehicle inside, um. Those vehicles are probably what you would consider the work vehicle, they have their tools, they have material that may be loaded from the bay, and then what we're seeing is that, um, tenants of these spaces will actually build some type of mezzanine or some type of office space, anticipating that there is an office staff, maybe that's someone doing the books, taking the phone calls, stuff like that. So requiring a space for that, uh, person seemed to make sense as well.
And then the comment I made last time, I don't know if we, is I see a lot of the storage facilities where people are doing this in the storage facilities. Do we need to specifically prohibit that? Or is it already specifically prohibited?
Uh, wa- allowing a staff person to set up an office?
No.
Oh.
Eliminating storage.
Contractor base, there are contractors.
Storage.
You, you store it, you store it, uh.
Yeah, and they're work, working, running a business out of them.
Right. Is that contrary to the intent, or you think it's okay that they're doing that?
No, I, I think that we should encourage that, actually. Because we are, we're seeing a shift where a lot of towns used to allow these type of businesses to operate out of a home, where we're, and even here in Wareham, we're pushing the dual use of a residence and a business out of our residential districts, and this is giving those trades somewhere to locate.
So you're, you're okay, so then, do these requirements adequately constrain contractor bays in a storage, public storage facility? Uh, none of these requirements would get triggered.
I think there's a difference between a storage facility, which, and what I'm thinking in my head, tell me if I'm wrong.
I'm trying to catch up.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking a storage facility is almost like something that has been constructed across from the entrance of Walmart. That's what I would consider as a store.
Yes, that's what I'm talking.
Renting storage cubicles.
I went to one right down the street by the fire station. There's quite a few contractors working out of there. They've been.
That's what I'm saying, there, the one.
So how, how do you, how do you get some, this new bylaw to apply to a misuse of another type of building?
Which is what I was trying to ask, does this intend, is that an allowed use? Or is this intended to constrain that use? Or do we need additional language?
I don't know that this would constrain it, I would imagine that constraint would be under a different, um.
So I, okay, is it an allowed use?
I think that would probably fall under your conditions of approval, like if I'm trying, it.
It would never come before, they don't come to us, they don't go to anybody, they just rent the storage space and they're doing it.
So it seems that to accommodate, accomplish that, that you would need to, uh, augment any language that refers to, uh, storage facilities, such that it limits that, that.
You're not envisioning this bylaw would try and cover that, we would need to look at other.
Right, I, I think this is more related to a profession that has some type of vehicle and, um, I don't wanna call it heavy storage of their equipment, but somewhere that they're storing equipment.
That, well, these, these bays are.
I think, it seems that the one thing it would do is it, it provides a, a sanctioned building type that lets this function happen.
Okay, so you've sort of answered my question, but there, there may be a problem that we need to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a big problem, but it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's related, but it's different.
And I'm sorry.
This wasn't intended to address that, so.
No, no, and I'm trying to relate it to the one storage facility that I know, you know, across from the entrance of Walmart.
That's one.
And.
There's lots of them all over town.
Yeah, um. I think if anything, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think that probably came in under, uh, actually, it might have been allowed at the time when it was constructed. Uh, so it might not have gone in front of the zoning board of appeals. I don't know, I'll have to look into that, but I think that should have been covered under the conditions of approval at the time. Where, you know, we haven't had anything in place for contractor bays or storage facilities specifically.
Storage facilities is under industrial uses, and they're not allowed anywhere in town.
Right.
Even though they're sitting in town.
All over town.
That's right, they're not.
That happens.
Well, I, I'm gonna try to stay out of the weeds on this one. But I believe that there were storage facilities constructed, and then there was a desire to stop allowing them, and that's when the zoning changed. To disallow.
Zoning changed when a certain person who was a selectman was in the process of building one.
Those are the weeds I was trying to stay out of, alright.
Let's not detract.
Yeah.
This bylaw was not intended to address that use.
Correct.
I'm, we may, we may need to address that use, but not in this bylaw.
Yep, correct.
Okay.
So that is actually the end of my presentation. On contract.
And make a motion, uh, board of the planning board. Vote to.
Article eighteen.
Eighteen, uh, to approve. To recommend to the committee.
For approval.
So I have a motion from Sam Corbett.
Second.
From Julie Moran, roll call vote. Starting with.
Jane Gleason, Jane Gleason, aye.
I think Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz votes aye. Five zero zero to recommend to the select board, no, to the select board, to town me, we recommend.
We recommend the town meeting. Thank you. I'll make sure to exclude it from your next public hearing, which will, uh, help the agenda.
Then what we need to do is, I need a motion to close the public hearing on.
Article eighteen.
Uh. Item six, I, uh, yeah, I don't know which, how it's designated in the public hearing, but.
Yeah, um, yeah, it was a little different just because of, we didn't even know what article it was when it first came in front of you guys. I, I identify it as number six.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion to club, oppose the public hearing on the zoning amendment, uh, item six on the agenda related to contractor base.
So moved. So moved.
I have a motion from Julie, a second from Sam, a roll call to close the public hearing.
Uh, Jane Gleason, aye.
Baptiste, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz votes aye, so this article is closed for, well, just before, there's nobody out there, right, there's no citizens other than Sarah. Sarah, do you wanna say anything?
Although I gotta get out of my screen sharing. Nope, it looks like she's good, and ju- just remember, I'll, I'll be presenting to her tomorrow night, though, she can think comments and present there, if she so chooses.
Next.
Julie, can you just let, which one do I have identified next?
MBTA.
TA.
MBTA.
Article seventeen.
Where, it doesn't say Article seventeen.
Right up here it does. Cause at the time he didn't know what article, they just got assigned numbers recently, so.
Right. Okay. Um. Okay, so my presentation for Article seven three, seven, Article seventeen of the town meeting warrant, uh, addresses multifamily housing in the Commercial General District. Um, I had presented this to you guys a couple weeks ago. Um, my presentation has since changed since then, understanding that the FinCom, the select board and, and maybe members of the public may not understand just what kind of pressure we're seeing from this, from the state, and how, um, it may happen regardless of what we're expecting. Uh, I think when I presented it to you guys initially, it was uh, grave and very, you know, these are the obstacles we're up against, um. Reflecting on that, I, I don't think this is as grave or as, uh, burdensome as maybe presented initially. I don't regret doing it that way, but I think moving forward, I need to present it in a different way to other members of, uh, the public. So again, this is the Commercial General District that highlighted it in green, um. It spans from one ninety-five uh, east to west, sorry, west to east is, uh, how I'll define it. It's roughly six hundred feet off of Cranberry Highway on either side. Uh, there are a few areas that are excluded, uh.
Rail corridor runs right through the middle of it, right?
The rail corridor?
The railroad.
No, the railroad actually runs to the south of it.
Oh, it's.
And then, and then goes to the middle.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
See my mark here, so this actually, black and white dash line is the rail corridor.
Oh, it is.
I thought, I thought this had to be.
Uh, so for MBTA communities that have a station, it needs to be located adjacent to the, the station or the stop. We are in MBTA adjacent community where we've had, we have the discretion to pick our zoning district that it happens in.
That's good.
Um, so if the MBTA was to ever propose, uh, a stop in Wareham, it would likely be on Merchant's Way, uh, behind Main Street. We may need to revisit our zoning at that time. Every conversation we've had with the MBTA and Mass DOT is that there is no proposal coming forward to extend the commuter rail down to Wareham. And that falls into play, uh, largely into some other projects that I'm working on, but I, I think we can take that as a surety that we shouldn't expect the community.
And having a, having the, having a stop in downtown Wareham would be a nightmare.
Yeah.
I would think.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, and a lot of communities that are fighting the MBT, MBTA community's law, it really, um, puts too much density on their downtown, and that's what their main problem is with it. We, we have the benefit of choosing where our district is, and when we envision the Commercial General District, we've already designated this district as allowing higher density than what the MBTA community's law is looking for. And I think that's important to know, um, that we've already, we already expected a large amount of density in here. Uh, there were just some few other areas of the bylaw that the state disagreed with. They identified those as barriers to, uh, the section three A of the, uh, chapter forty A, the, the MBTA community's law. Uh, so now that I've identified the zoning district, uh, the changes to, uh, the use table, uh, you'll see that we disallow it everywhere except for the Commercial General District where it is allowed by right. Uh, again, we've had the discussion of what by right means, uh, when you're talking about permitting and applications, uh, and I'll discuss it a little more further in my presentation, but, uh, by light, by right means that there is no, um, additional requirements of permitting, whether they be, uh, through the planning or zoning board.
So you can't apply site plan review to these?
No. Um. Some of our less strict zoning standards still apply when you think about, you know, the dimensional requirements will still apply, the, um, setbacks and frontages still apply, um. So there, there is a, I'll say zoning review, but when you get into really the, the bylaw and areas where we have tried to make a density of this size more help of a wall to the community, that's where we're seeing pushback from the state, because they're identifying these as permitting requirements, and the law is to establish these type of uses without permitting requirements.
Except there's nowhere in any town, anywhere that don't have dimensional standards.
Right.
There's no, there's no zoning district anywhere in the wor- in the United States that doesn't have some sort of dimensional standard.
Right, then, uh, and I agree, whether, and, you know, that's, I think, where a, another area where these really attribute to a, um, a detriment to downtowns, um, and when I look at a lot of our Commercial General District, I don't see this as being a barrier to that, or that being a barrier to this. Whichever way makes sense on that one. Um, so I think we've identified, or I've identified twelve, um, key areas in the bylaw that the state refers to as restrictions and are inconsistent with the, the law. Um, for example, section eight twenty-four point one, we have a five acre minimum, um. What I'm proposing, so actually, the last time I spoke to you guys about this, I had proposed the waivers in each of the sections where they were identified. I've, I've changed that to just applying a list of waivers under multifamily in the Commercial General District. I think it's, it's gonna be less confusing on the average user of the zoning bylaw, and it's actually gonna be, uh, more identifiable by someone coming in to do one of these projects. So I've, I've broken it down to a list of waivers that is identified under the Commercial General District, um. Okay. Um, so first, we require a five acre minimum, uh, the state says that's too high of a standard when we're looking at density, uh, and they wanted us to come down on that, so we've reduced it to one acre. Um, it says one principal residential building per lot is what we require, um, and the state says that you could have multiple buildings as long as, uh, the overall density is greater than fifteen units. Really, I, I think that's important to know, the state law is looking for a density of fifteen units per acre. We have already allowed density as high in this district to be thirty-nine units an acre. So when we, when you calculate the math out on that, we're clearly much higher, um, but so number three, uh, section six twenty-three, we have a building footprint limitation, we, we have to waive that entirely. Um, number four, landscaping and pervious surface requirement at thirty percent. So, the standards are unreasonable for section three A for development, uh, we have to require a waiver to that, um.
So we'll just have piles of water, just.
So, well, um, they still do have to meet the mass stormwater standards, um.
But if you don't have pervious ground cover, it, and you have to build.
Detention retention basins and underground storage, yeah, it.
It, it puts a different kind of burden on the project.
Yeah, I, I think even in some cases, a more restrictive burden than what we've a- applied, um, but, um, you know, that's the state has a goal of creating so many housing units by, whether it be twenty thirty or twenty forty-five, and and this is the mechanism that they thought was the best.
More Healy's home.
Couple of solar farms there too.
Yeah, not sure where she lives.
Milton.
I always say, watch.
Yeah.
Good luck, lots of those in Milton right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Um. So, uh, minimum unit size shall not apply, but there are minimal unit sizes applicable under the State Building Code and Understandatory Codes. So, um, you know, we're, we're not waiving it so that you could build a ten by ten unit, there are still standards that apply to it.
Uh, is there some, uh, thinking of, um, applying the DHCD? Affordable housing minimums? Because there are. Because there are tiny house minimums too, which but those are tiny. I wonder if applying the DHCD minimums is a reasonable. I don't know, I don't know, uh just for, I'm spitballing here.
Yeah, so I I think what my fear is Jane is that they're gonna look at that as a restriction to development.
Okay, well, and and I believe in the new code, there's a new appendix that uh outlines tiny houses, so. Somebody could come in and put in a tiny house community, which is not a bad thing um i- in my mind. Um so anyway, keep going. Again, I'm spitballing.
Sure, uh so we have a ru- a utility provision, um. A requirement that it's serviced by the Public Water System adequate for fire protection. Um and domestic use shall not apply. Uh such project remain subject to all applicable state and local regulations governing water supply, fire protection and building safety. I think the goal of this one under our zoning bylaw was to say if you had a sprinkled building. It has to be required to be tied into town water, and that was our way of assuring. That they had adequate water supply. Um there is still a requirement that it has adequate water supply. And normally this is accomplished with some type of system on the property.
Or tower.
Water tower, right, right, whether it be located underground or on the roof of a building. Uh usually those are dedicated storage units only for, let's say, fire protection. Um and I think there's a requirement that you flush them out every so often, and some stuff like that, but. Again, we're not waving. All fire protections, we're just waving our requirement of it being tied into uh Wareham or onset water district. So they have identified that the two hundred foot setback under the coastal wetland, so we have a coastal wetland setback. Which is uh unique to Wareham and even unique to Wareham under the zoning bylaw. It's not something that the Conservation Commission requires. The two hundred foot setback. Uh when you look at the Commercial General District, really applies to so little of it. Um especially when you look, because we've identified it as coastal wetland. And the coastal wetlands only are south of Cranberry Highway. So even if you did have some fringe wetlands north of Cranberry Highway, they're not considered coastal wetlands, so. And even when I look at um. The coastal. Try, they might never, and that's only because the state. Has a jurisdiction that is what is considered riverfront.
Oh, okay.
Um and the riverfront standards are already two hundred feet anyway. And again, we're not waving that they go in front of.
I'm just saying with. Rising sea level.
Sea level rise, salt marsh migration, yeah, you're to, you're you're on the right track. And if you've ever looked at the predictions of sea level rise for twenty fifty or twenty seventy. Wareham is in a very scary position.
See, what year is it now? It's twenty 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 fives, so I'll be ninety-five in twenty fifty.
So it won't be your problem. But your house is probably arguably one of one of the ones that it will be your problem.
I believe it, I believe my house is in trouble, yes.
Yeah, well, a lot of Wareham is in trouble if those predict predictions are accurate. So again, I I think the main point I want to reiterate on this is. We are reducing the requirement under the zoning bylaw. The Wareham Wetlands Protection Act, but it is still covered under. The Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, which has a two hundred foot riverfront applicability anyway. Uh so they'll still be going to conservation for for some type of permit. And I think maybe one of the best ways to look at this is similar to, and I hate to utter the word, a forty B development. Um there is still state, uh there are some local regulations, but mainly a lot of it. Number eight, we require outdoor recreation uh where and it's tied to uh the number of bedroom units in a uh. Specific dwelling or a group of dwellings. Again, we can encourage it, but we can't require it. And I think that's like maybe a good way, a good position to take on this, is that we we recommend it, but we don't require it. Site alteration special permit, again, we can't require it under the state law. Uh parking special permit uh for multifamily housing, again, we can't require it. And even you see that one come up in a lot of our forty B presentations. Uh that we're a little strict on the parking when it comes to those type of applications. And then I I specifically added a limitation on waivers. Uh just so people understand that we are not waving anything to do with the building code, the Wetlands Protection Act. Certain areas, I'll say of the Wareham Wetlands Protective Bylaw, uh but most of it is just a reflection of the state law. Uh state and local stormwater requirements will still be required. Um and then I go on to say federal health, safety and environmental.
Okay, great.
What's that?
Title five.
Title, yeah, title five, yeah.
Which is health, I would say, yeah.
Yep.
Environmental, okay.
Um so I and I think I. I have it in my presenter notes, which I don't see here, but I I would like to say that. We've been in an interim compliance with the state on this law uh up until. Uh they've given us the deadline of June of twenty twenty-six. I'm bringing this forward to the Fall Town Meeting, you know, hopefully to to gain the town's approval. But I wanted to give us two meetings to really. Yeah, to to get it right or identify that there may be hesitation from the town and to see how it plays out. Uh so we do have the ability to bring it back in the spring and still be in compliance with the state. But they have made it very clear to us that there is no extension being granted for this. June of twenty-six is our deadline. The reason it's so important for us to get this approved, whether it be at this town meeting or the Springtown Meeting, is. Wareham um acquires and benefits. A lot from the state grants that are provided. And many of the grants that we have been awarded and done really good projects with.
Require this.
Require this.
Yes.
And to see us lose funding uh would be a real detriment to the community. Because we're gonna have to find another place to, you know, allocate those funds from. I've done some calculations in the last five years, I think we've benefited from over two million dollars worth of these grants. And projecting in the future, I think it could be, you know, two or three billion that we could miss out on if we don't get this resolved. But that is the presentation for multifamily uh housing in the Commercial General District.
So do we have any concerns with this? We gotta do this, right? So do you want a motion that we recommend?
Make a motion that the Wareham Planning Board recommends a town meeting that we support Article seventeen.
I have a motion from Sam. Second from uh Jane uh Jane Gleason, roll call.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
I am looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Agenda MBTA Community Zoning Compliance.
Second.
Did I get a motion? Jane, motion from Jane Gleason, second from Julie Moran, roll call vote, please.
Uh Jane Gleason, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Carl Schultz, both aye. Uh public hearings closed, recommendation passed five zero zero.
Thank you. Are you looking to take a quick break, Carl?
I am.
Okay, why don't we take five or longer long Carl needs and.
Looking for an old man.
Next one is sixteen.
Actually, the next one is fifteen, Sam.
Fifteen?
Uh you'll you'll see number sixteen at your next meeting. There's two that you're gonna see at your next meeting, there's one that's presented by me. And then there's one going to be presented by uh Mrs. Ekstrom.
I want to ask you about that.
Haven't seen that one yet.
You have thoughts on that? She like rewriting zoning.
I have thoughts. We'll discuss them at the next.
Okay, we should, we should definitely all be on the same page.
On um Judy, Judith, um the grant. Will you, have you made contact with the with the state at all to see if we can extend that?
So I've reached out to the state, um I've talked to one gentleman who. Was in uh it kinda wasn't his department, like he was responsible for other grants, but. He's the guy that I got when I called uh One Stop. So I was actually, he put me in contact with probably the decision maker of our grant.
Is it Grant King, no?
No, I spoke or I sent an email to. Aggie Kenny.
Oh, I know that name, okay.
Uh so I sent her an email actually this morning.
Right.
And um you know, I in my email, I kinda laid out that the extension is a uh. No material, no cost increased extension, uh really, we're just looking for more time.
Yeah, right.
Um and the gentleman that I spoke to today was uh. Pretty certain that, you know, as long as we haven't expired already, we haven't.
And we're moving forward.
And we're moving forward.
Yeah, good.
He felt there would probably be uh something that they would be uh interesting.
Okay, Jane, did you hear that? I asked Josh about whether it made any progress on getting the grant extended for Judy Barrett. So he's made some good contacts, so he's working on that. Well, because we feel like we need more time, cause otherwise it's you need to have everything done by June, which we think will be hard to do.
Yeah.
And we have a meeting next week, is it?
At two o'clock.
Yeah, okay. That's good, that'll be good if we can get that extension.
Yeah, I requested until June of twenty seven.
That's great, okay.
I mean, I I think realistically, we could probably bring it to Fall Town Meeting, I feel like that makes sense.
Yeah.
But hey, we've given ourselves the cushion to.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm tucking away and my, I'm on mute, haha.
But you heard, so that's good.
Yes, I heard, that I think that's awesome, that is really, that would be so helpful.
Yes, for sure.
It's gonna be such a push to get it done within the time constraint. Better better to spend more time on it and really get it get it solid and right.
Do you think Paul Turner might be interested in Beijing?
He was invited, but he declined, didn't he?
I don't, well, we didn't make him part of the steering committee, uh I think that really would have been too much for him.
Yeah, I agree, but.
But I I talked to Judy and I think what we'll do is we'll try to set up a meeting with him and some of his staff to really get their opinion on some of this stuff.
I think that's important.
Get his opinion a little later in the process.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, it it just seems that where he's gonna be working with it, that it makes sense for him to have some buy-in.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. Okay, jumping, I guess jumping backwards to number article fifteen of um. The October Town Meeting, one. Uh so this is uh this is article fifteen, but actually it amends a lot of article fifteen in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
So it's both article fifteen.
Yeah, and.
Yes, existing one.
Taking taking your comment from earlier, Jane, I'll uh I'll identify it's article fifteen in my presentation.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um okay, so this is. We've kinda seen this come a couple times around now, we saw it prior to the Springtown Meeting, I presented on it once before.
Do we have to have a motion, Carl, to open the public hearing?
No, we've already opened.
We've already opened this one. Yep, this one's already been opened.
We opened all of these.
Yeah.
Previously.
Right.
I'm sorry, I.
Couple of times ago, we did.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for being on the up and up though, that's, I appreciate that. Never hurts to confirm. Uh okay, so I and I think I'm accurate when I speak to this one. That we're seeing um some minor. Maybe not issues, but.
Interpretation, I don't know, whatever you wanna call it.
I don't think it's interpretation, I think it's in being interpreted correctly. I think the issue that we're seeing is that there's kind of a. A pickleball match that can occur between the planning and the zoning board. Um dependent on thoughts about how a site could move forward. I think that's where the major. Conflict is in this, where the requirement of the planning board to be the. Permit granting authority uh for all site plan review. But still keeping the zoning board uh the ability to. Grant special permits or variances on the application.
They're they're the only under state law who can grant variances.
Correct.
Right, correct. Uh special permits, we could kinda change, we could change. I maybe many of the special permit requirements to the planning board. I can't speak to why they go in front of the zoning board or the planning board historically. I don't know why they were set up in some instances that way, but um. I think what we've identified is that um. Whether or regardless of whether it goes to the planning board or the zoning board. All of our site plan review applications are peer reviewed by Allen and Majors. So I think you you guys as a planning board or as a zoning board are getting a lot of similar input. Uh from the technical aspect of these applications, uh as they're both being reviewed by Phil. I think there are discretionary or maybe board preferences that may change in many of these applications. But from my opinion, what I've seen between the planning board and the zoning board, you fall in a very similar vein on a lot of things.
What we were trying to avoid was board shopping.
Yeah.
Right, yep, and I would agree with that, cause I think I think the idea was. If I'm an applicant and I know that I need a variance. Or no, no, if I'm an applicant and I think my project would be more favorable in front of the zoning board. I'm going to create an instance of a variance.
Kind of variance.
Right, to to put me there.
Yes.
Whether. Whether I actually required the variance or not, I'm gonna get it to.
And they may say we don't, you don't need the variance, but by the way, while you're here, we'll do the special permit, yeah. Okay.
Well, yeah, they had the ability to.
Yes, that's right.
Or the site plan review. Um so I think now that we've been interpreting uh fifteen fifty-two. The way that it was written, we, I think there was a time period where we don't, we're not interpreting it that way. Uh but now that we've seen a few applications come in where it's. Site plan review in front of the planning board and anything else on the zoning board, where that um. Application shopping doesn't really make sense, right, cause you're you're not doing it to do it that way. I think we're seeing issues with. The timing of the boards or even um I think a big. Perception from my part is you're requiring an applicant to sit in front of two boards. The time constraint of that and the monetary restraint of that, which is now you're paying for two applications. You're notifying a butter's twice, you are advertising in the public newspaper uh multiple times now as well. So I think the planning board has a special interest in the WV one R district. And I guess whether you like it or not. You've become the knowledge base for uh permits under five ninety and five ninety-seven. Solar and battery, energy, storage uh respectively. So uh having a few conversations, I think we identified that. You guys could remain the site plan review authority on those type of applications. But maybe just go back to uh what we originally proposed, which was. Or not proposed, but what was originally instated of if there is a special permit or variance requirement, you go in front of the zoning board. For site plan review. I guess maybe this would be a good time to get thoughts of the board on going back to that process.
I don't understand how that then applies because. Any variance, even for solar projects, is gonna have to go to the ZBA.
Correct.
And almost all site, all solar projects ultimately are gonna require variance. I think going forward, there, it's gonna.
The way it's moving, those batteries.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think of a few that you've had, you've had um. The solar project on County Road, I don't think required a variance at all. Um, there's a few other ones that we have seen that have required of.
The two Fletcher projects.
They required variances.
Did one and then.
Yeah, the zoning board heard the other.
But with the one we did, they went to.
And got a, yeah, or were denied.
Yeah, they were denied.
They were denied.
It's ten minutes discussion.
And then uh Maple Springs was solely in front of the zoning board. That one kind of got caught up in the, doesn't go in front of planning for site plan review or not. Uh but they did require variance.
Yeah, so I, I don't, yeah, it's very.
But they, I ultimately, they would go to the zoning board for variance, if they were denied the variance. Uh it would be regard, whether you guys approved the project or not, it would still be a denied application. You look like you're pondering that, Carl, you want me, let me, maybe I should try to explain it differently. If I.
I I guess because the two boards are not of like minds, we spend a lot more time writing conditions and and um. That's, that's. If if we were more of a like mind on conditions of approval and.
Um, yeah, I I could agree with that and um. You know, it may be, this may present an opportunity to enhance our standard conditions on projects.
Right, which is what we were trying to do, but we couldn't get really any traction on that.
Right, well, I I think that's a worthwhile project, uh I did it for the Conservation Commission, we have a. Fairly robust set of standard conditions that um. At this point, actually.
Think the planning board could very quickly have a fairly robust set of standard conditions for solar projects.
I I agree, and and at this point.
Done some of them already.
Right, I mean, I think it's just looking back at prior.
Well, the last two or three that we've done are very close to a standard that that we've been working towards.
Yep, I would agree with that. And I, and just speaking from the conservation perspective. It almost goes without saying that, you know, the project requires the standard conditions that we've imposed. They say it because they have to, but I don't think anyone is is against it. I I actually, what I'm starting to see now is a lot of applications come in. Addressing the standard conditions before we've actually even.
That's what we're trying to get to, that's, that's what the rules and regulations we're trying to drive to. Don't even come forward until you have this sort of put together that way.
Right, so the. Oh, I have my screen up, I'm not even sharing it, that's, sorry about that. You haven't missed much.
Again. How would the other case would, what happens with subdivisions that require variances?
Um subdivisions, well, you guys are the subdivision uh granting authority.
But how would this change that when they need a variance?
They, again, they would go, it wouldn't change this much at all. I I would say that this is really uh site plan review specific. So if it requires site plan review, then this is where you're gonna see all the alterations. Uh subdivision applications, you guys are the permit granting authority for all subdivisions. Regardless of this change or not, if they required a variance, they would still go in front of the zoning board.
They'd still have to have two applications then? But normally, we do subdivisions get site plan review and special permit.
Right, right, and this, this would have no effect on it, because this is looking at site plan review only.
Um, okay, I. I'm confused as to how it's gonna change.
This is, this is only changing application requirements, site plan review.
But what if it requires site plan review and special permit? And a variance.
Uh, well, I guess this is a good time to show you my graphic here. Um, so imagine there be a site plan review box here, I don't know why it's showing up, not showing up. But currently, what we have is uh site plan review, you go to the planning board. We ask the question, does the project require variance or a special permit? If no, you continue with the planning board and you fall down to site plan uh review approval. If it does require a special permit or a variance, uh you have a public meeting with the zoning board. You obtain approval for the special permit or variance. You either get approved or denied. Now, I think the issue that I've identified with this is, let's say. Uh, we have an application for site plan review. It comes before the planning board, it requires a variance for, just as an example, two parking spaces. Um, the planning board um says, go to the zoning board, get your two parking spaces. Or get your variance for the two parking spaces, come back to us when you're done with that. Diablo, it goes to the zoning board, they say, hey, we need a variance for two parking spaces. And the zoning board says, well, actually, if you change your plan up, uh. You move your building fifteen feet to the right, you actually don't need a variance from us.
So how does this change like wireless communications?
Um, wireless communication.
They're all labeled as special permit zoning.
It wouldn't change it at all.
So I don't understand then, your, your, this does, that chart doesn't reflect.
So wireless communications is a special permit requirement. We are specifically looking at site plan review.
If a special permit is going to ZBA.
Yeah, regardless, then wireless communications would have never come in front of you anyway.
Oh, for WVR wanted this.
That's identified. Okay, um, but again, that's special permit, I so not site.
And then in fifteen, though, special permit and site plan reviewers, still a couple.
And we wanted to do it.
All right, I'm just trying to look at the use table to figure out, there's nothing in here that's just site plan review. In the use table.
Right, cuz as of right now, site plan review is largely triggered by the requirement of parking spaces.
Yeah, there were a couple in. Five ninety.
Um, just remember, Carl, you might be working out of the out of date zoning bylaw.
That, that didn't change that one.
Okay, I I just wasn't sure, I didn't want.
Oh, you're right, I was looking at the old, I actually think there's a new version of bylaws, we never closed on that issue. Which was Springtown Meeting in twenty twenty-four. That's.
There needs to be one newer.
I think that that is the current version of bylaws, not the October one.
Okay.
We never. We never closed on that, but that's, it's not relevant.
We should have discussion offline, for sure.
Okay, so battery energy storage requires both site plan review. Large-scale ground-mounted solar requires site plan review and special permit in every case. So that means every one of those is now going to go to.
Based on what you're saying.
Unless it needs a variance.
If it, if, if there is a requirement of a variance, variance being the the sp- specific word there. They would go to the zoning board for the variance. But they would be coming to you for the site plan review, special.
We own solar, whether we like it or not.
But then I don't, that's what the bylaw said, so I don't know what we're changing. Okay. It's the only place in the use table other than parking. In the use table was large-scale ground-mounted solar and battery energy storage.
That requires a special permit right off the, or a site plan review right off.
And a special permit, and both of them were added to the, to try and clarify.
And that's what, that's what the bylaw says too.
Right.
Recites that. Both a news table and text.
So I'm not clear exactly what we're changing.
So. What, I'll try to nutshell this a little bit. What we're looking at is site plan review specifically. Which is largely, and I'll say for all intents and purposes, because I am sectioning out. Solar and battery, battery energy.
I won't answer that question.
Leave, leave those ones out, those are yours forever. Uh and any site plan review within the Wareham Village, one R district is yours. Regardless of any changes we make.
But those two things. Other than that, if they need uh. Site plan review, but they also need a special permit or a variance, then they go to special, go to uh zoning.
No, no other place in the bylaw is site plan review called out, right, except for park.
Except for parking, right.
Uh is that, although it could be buried in some obscure bylaw.
I I think you're, I think you're ninety-nine percent accurate. Site plan and review is largely triggered by.
Or thirty acres, I'm sorry. Or thirty acres.
Now you're a hundred percent. So what this, the, the goal of this is, one, to bring it back to what it was before some changes to the zoning bylaw. I'll say maybe three revisions ago now. Um, this is what it was, it was if you, and I think what you were trying to do was get rid of the, the permit shopping of an applicant. I think my opinion, you know, sitting, sitting in the desk that I work at. I think the zoning board and the planning board really come to a very similar um determination. Because of the input they're getting from Phil and Arrow. I think a lot of these projects would end very similarly, whether it went in front of you or the zone. Because of the recommendations of Allen and Majors. Um, so I think what this is trying to do, or what I believe it could be doing. Is uh reducing a barrier we see to development and a lot of frustration from applicants coming before.
So give me an example, oh, I I'm fully supportive of what you're saying, I can't think of. Although, given the way the bylaws are written, I don't understand why Maple Springs went to the zoning board.
I I think that may have been a determination, um maybe a determination error.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that. Mistakes are mistakes.
And just, you know, I think the biggest reason for that one was there was a property line running through the center of the project. That required a uh buffer on either side, which was a variance. So uh I think that was largely.
What projects are getting confused, cuz I don't think we've seen any projects that we wouldn't normally have seen.
Okay, so um.
Well, we've been seeing so much solar, it's hard to say.
Right.
So solar and subdivisions are mostly the projects that come to us, or like Danny Warren with parking. That came to us because of parking.
Well, and because of his district.
Oh, we, no, is he in the W, he's not in the WV one R district, is he? No.
Okay, it must.
But that, that WV one R wasn't even.
It was parking.
It was parking and it didn't require a variance or a special permit. That's the only reason it would have come.
It ended up needing a special permit for something, but.
That may have been after when he decided to change the project up. It could have been one of.
So give me an example of one that's real that caused a confusion. Or not real, but.
Right.
Uh, the High Bay. Twenty-seven thirty-one.
Taco Bell. That's. Similar one.
Yeah, cuz they.
I would say the major ones in front of you currently.
Taco Bell would have come to us.
They require the variance and the, the variant, special permit for landscape. Right, but your.
What comes under us.
Yeah, your trigger isn't just the parking. Your, the trigger that it came before you under is the, the language in the bylaw that says you are the site plan review authority.
I, okay, I don't.
I'll, I'll say two years ago, Taco Bell would have required a special permit or a variance. They would have went to the zoning board for site plan review as well.
So that's one application, I thought you said you spent a huge burden.
Well, no, Taco Bell, twenty-seven thirty-one Cranberry Highway would have. Went in front of the zoning board and you guys. Two East Boulevard, they're gonna require a variance or a special permit, they're going in front of both you and the zoning board.
But that again is a parking trigger, right? But that would have come to us.
It would have.
Well, what about twenty-seven thirty-one, which was a use variance?
I was a use variance, um.
So that would have come, gone to the planning board, I mean, to the ZBA.
It was a use variance, yeah.
Well, they went to the ZBA and then they came to us.
Got the use variance and then came to us.
Right.
New format, they would go stay.
Stay with ZBA.
Unless it's solar.
Unless it's solar or it's located in the Wareham Village District.
I'm not sure what we changed that caused that to happen.
Uh, the specific change that caused it to happen was identifying the planning board as being the site plan review authority.
Period, end of story.
Where before it was, if you're prior to variance. Right, you did site plan review with the zoning board. And I think that was your way to present, to prevent permit shopping. Was if the planning board is always the site plan review authority, it doesn't matter if they require a variance or not.
But we were only talking about solar and where, because what we were trying to stop is. The, the ones that were, the WV one R ones that were going to the zoning board.
Well, because we were lying.
But it was also very clear in four fifteen. And it wasn't getting applied from four fifteen. Or for article four somewhere.
Yeah, I, I don't. I don't know how much of this was an interpretation error either by maybe the previous building commissioner. Cuz there could have been some of that going on as well. And I, I think now what we're seeing is um. The accurate interpretation of the bylaw, which is site plan review in front of the planning board, special permit variance in front of the zoning board.
Except for solar and WVR one.
Right, well, actually, that is what I am proposing, that you guys keep solar and WVR one.
Well, W, article fifth four, article four says we are. So that's a problem, there's some, there's some conflicts.
That's right.
And this was really driven by the WB one R, not solar so much.
Okay, well, then I think if, if that's what it says in article four as well, then we're still, we're double covered.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to figure out what we're trying to fix, I'm, I'm supportive of trying to fix these zoning bylaws.
I would say that we're trying to fix the situations and.
Okay, so special permit, that's special permit, not site plan. Okay, so special permit, that's special permit, not site plan reviews. The following uses shall require a special permit from the planning board in addition to a site plan review special permit. Public transportation center, hotel motel conference center, long term care nursing, this is article four.
Yeah.
Restaurant with drive through, restaurant with drive through, Taco Bell would have come to us based on article four.
Uh, no, I think there's a conflict in the zoning bylaw that says you cannot have a drive through without a variance.
I'm just.
No, I.
Four fifty five.
I agree, but I think the interpretation from the building commissioner is.
Oh wait, it's, and that's, oh, that's in the B dot. Okay, you gotta look, that's in B dot.
Okay. Right. Carl, I think this is a great example of why we're going through the revisions of the file.
Yes, thank you.
I, I think.
Yes.
Why we're going through that process.
So many inconsistencies.
Absolutely.
We've been attacking at piecemeal, fourteen, articles fourteen and fifteen, the news table. Yeah, article sixteen. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, you need to look at article four, cause there's all kinds of special permit requirements.
Usually, yeah, and usually those are zoning district specific.
They are, they're all zoning.
So.
Yes.
District specific. What I would say is likely none of those would, would be altered. Because they would be zoning district specific.
Yeah.
Such as the W V one R.
A uh. Excellent, yeah. Feels, we're gonna help that's. Groundwater, that's the groundwater protection, the buttermilk district, Board of Appeals. These are overly stricts. Oh, four A, that's where, that's the redevelopment districts, tree mods.
What I would say is the proposals we are ultimately looking at making are to site plan review under article fifteen. And uh, the zoning districts that you're looking at under article four would still. Article four would take precedent over uh.
Except that article four for the W V one R district, four A twenty dot five. Uh, comply with site plan review under article fifteen. So if you change article fifteen. It changes W V one R.
But except for the fact that I'm saying all site plan review for W V one R stays with the planning board anyway, in article fifteen.
Oh, it says that in article.
Right, correct, yep.
Yeah, but now we've got. Okay, it, it may, it may.
There, there was a potential issue, but me identifying that uh it stays with you guys, uh, leaves that.
Yeah.
It's very.
Yeah, it is, well.
Yep, and I.
Why we're doing a lot of work.
Yep, I, I think we're gonna get a lot of great perspective out of working with Judy Barrett.
Yeah.
And I, I think.
Yeah.
I think if this is, uh, if, if this is arguably confusing, just wait till uh fall of next year.
Okay, I'm uh. I support that we're trying to clarify this. I just didn't, I didn't understand. I thought we had fixed it.
Yeah.
And.
But I think you had fixed it in a way that uh, I think you had fixed it for an issue. That maybe wasn't as big of an issue as.
But then for Springtown meeting, I thought I reworded it by just changing one slight.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to look into that and, and see where we stand.
Didn't make it because it didn't get posted for public hearing. So I.
So do we wanna, do we wanna continue this one?
Yeah, it didn't.
Let's not, yeah, it didn't get published, so it never went to town meeting. It didn't get discussed.
You're saying just continue with this, so.
Yeah, and let's all sort of try and digest it a little more.
Yeah.
And, and we, we still have time to vote on it on, on the twentieth.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and if anyone wants to stop by my office, I'd be more than happy to, to talk it out. Um, the other, the other.
As long as it's clear when Paul issues his letters of denial.
Sure.
Yeah.
The, I, I will, I just wanna mention on this while we still have a few minutes. Um, there is a section in fifteen fifty four that uh relates to use variances. Um, currently it reads that um. The uses that are granted as a use variance have to be identified in article three. Um, the problem we see in that is we don't know, any number of uses could. Come up, right? Contractor basis is something very new for us. Uh, so what I, what I would like to do is change the language uh to say that it doesn't have to be identified in article three. But it has to be at least compatible with any use that's in article three.
Which is different than the intent we had. At one point, the intent was if it's not in the use table, it's not in a.
Yeah.
It is prohibited.
Yeah.
Right.
And you're, you're saying that's not the case anymore.
Which is generally what the law has always been, that.
So it's actually Judy's, Judy's position was, um. She was sort of surprised that we allowed things to happen if they were not stated.
Correct.
Which is what we were trying to get to. You can't, if it's not in the use table, you can't do it.
Right, which was what she was, she was surprised we didn't do that already.
Well, I think her, her stance was more, she was surprised that we were giving out use variances in general.
Exactly, yeah, well, do, doesn't one, aren't those the same thing?
Standard is.
Yeah.
Yes. For sure.
But it, it sounds like we wanna continue this to October twentieth and, and I'll, I'll end with that.
Okay.
That's, yeah, that's what I think. I want some time to really stew on this.
The discussion of proposed amendments, the article fifteen to the. Unregularly scheduled planning board meeting of October twenty. All in favor, roll call please.
Jane Gleese and I.
Deputy stack.
Julie Moran, I.
I'm COVID nine.
And crosshairs. Put these back in the box, if you would. I'm gonna take one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get Julie Moran a, I hope so.
Could I? Can we get copies of, of your, your language for the town meeting for that article, Josh?
Yep, of course.
Yeah.
And I'll pull up, and I, I went over with Ken, Paul and Nazi for the last town meeting. To fix that one problem you were talking about.
Perfect.
Was a subtle, it's like a missing comma.
Okay, yeah, if you wanna bring it down, I'd be happy to look at.
Gotta dig it up, but okay, I gotta come talk to you. What, what do I need to fill out for you? Did you figure out what I've gotta do?
Yeah, why don't we adjourn the meeting and talk about it?
All right, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, moved. Tang Glies and I.
Hey.
Right, okay.
We'll see you in the morning. Julie Moran, I.
Sam. Sam.
Sure they can grant you a bed anywhere.
And crosshairs to its eyes, so we adjourn at nine fifty seven uh four one zero.